Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of December 12th, 2013. If we could all please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start off the meeting with consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes, regular session minutes of November 14th, 2013, public relations minutes of September 30th, 2013, public relations minutes of November 15th, 2013, safety minutes of March 14th, 2013, safety minutes of May 9th, 2013, and acceptance of warrants number 21V14, number 23V14, number 22P14, and number 24P14. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi Mary Beth.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Good.
So yesterday we had our holiday concert, the corral and the band and the chorus. It went really well, it was good. It was nice to just sing a couple of fun pop Christmas songs, a couple of serious songs, and then a couple magicals that have nothing to do with the holidays, but still nice. Friday, the boys have their first basketball game home, so it's gonna be really exciting. Gonna have a big crowd. I know today was a big day for the seniors because a lot of people heard back from colleges. I heard back from Emerson and I got accepted.
Oh.
Very excited.
Is that your first choice?
No, my first choice is Northeastern, but Emerson's right up there, so it's very exciting. And Ryan Maher, my good friend and then a friend of the school committee, he got accepted to Brown University.
That's where he wanted, I'm very happy.
Which is amazing, so that's where he's going, he did an early decision, so yeah.
Very happy for him, he was really looking forward to it.
He deserves it very much.
Yes.
Great. So yeah, that's basically it, kinda winding down before vacation.
The concert last night was really beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
It was really good.
Mrs. Laflamme works really hard, so does Mr. Messina.
Yeah, well you can tell.
Yeah.
And the students too, it was so festive. Like I left there, like I really wasn't in the holiday spirit yet, I left there, I'm like, I just wanna go shopping. I didn't, but it was really beautiful.
It was a very busy week because they had the middle school band concert one night, and then they had the high school another. And then the next week, I think, is the middle school chorus and the elementary concert.
Yes.
So it's a bit, very busy time, but it's, like you said, festive and fun.
Right.
It's all good.
It is nice.
Yeah, the a cappella club went caroling downtown Georgetown in the freezing.
On a very bad rainy night, but we did.
But I heard a couple people say that it got them into the holiday spirit, so.
So where do you do that? Do you go to businesses or?
Yeah, we start off right in front of Georgetown Bank, and then we go to the gas station, and then we go to CBS, and then to Crosby's, and then we go back to the school.
That's great.
So we got it.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, I was there when they were getting ready to leave, and it was really not nice weather, and they, there was a group of them, and they were all bundled up, and it didn't deter them, off they went.
So how many of you went?
Well, we have a lot of people in our a cappella club, around like 20, so that's, we had like 16 people go.
Yeah.
Wow.
It was fun.
That's good attendance.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Laflamme and, and Mrs. Donovan, Ms. Donovan.
Wow, that's great.
Which is really above and beyond for them to take the kids out.
Yeah, it's really nice, they're really devoted.
And there is the first wrestling match is this Fri- is tomorrow as well, so.
Oh, right, yes, yeah, you're right.
New wrestling coach, and I think a pretty full group, you know, pretty full team.
They're very excited.
And you might, you might have realized that our longtime basketball coach has been having some health issues. So Barry Spears, who's always been kind of in an assistant role.
He's great too.
He kinda retired last year, and when we realized that Mike, it was gonna be difficult for Mike Rowinsky to assume the responsibility this year, just because the health things really are tough for him to manage the rigors of a basketball season and coach, we asked Barry if he'd like to just come back, you know, for this year, you know, so Mike could have the time to recover, and he was delighted to do it. And Mike was really happy about that because he knows the kids, he knows the system, you know, and I think they have a nice relationship and he wanted to do it, you know, for Mike. So we're excited to support Barry this year as the, as the coach.
That's good, and Mike does plan on coming back next year.
Yeah, that's, that's his plan, you know, so, yeah, so we're very, you know, grateful for Barry that he stepped forward. I think everybody, and particularly the senior, the senior players, you know, they, yeah, it's nice to have a familiar face rather than starting fresh, you know, in your senior year or something. So I think that's gonna work out great.
That's good, well I wish, I wish everybody luck tomorrow, that's great.
Yes.
Wrestling and basketball. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda?
That isn't on the agenda.
That isn't on the agenda.
No.
No. Okay. Administrative reports?
Yeah, we have a few. Joan and I wanted to first talk about the CIP projects because, as you know, they're trying to, as part of the budget process, very soon they're going to be calling a meeting, and we, you know, thankful we have a representative, and I think he'll do an awesome job on behalf of the committee. But, you know, we consulted, Joan and I had a couple meetings with Mike Anderson, trying to, you know, get some recommendations that we could bring to the committee that we wanted to, to have considered. Last year, I think that there's a fairly substantial amount of free cash, I wanna say $700,000 or something in free cash. And, you know, so, you know, we're obviously, we're one, one group requesting the funds, but we're looking at these as, you know, a way to make long-term improvements to things that we absolutely need to make improvements. So the first is, is a rooftop air conditioner in the, in the high school. And I think the original hope was that this would, this was discussed as part of the middle, high school renovation project, as something that was on the original list. But as that, you know, in an attempt to keep that number that will be requested by the town, from the town, and hopefully in the spring, we, we determined that this would be something that we need to do sooner than later, anyway. You know, the, the cost of each unit I have here is $5,000, so it is a big ticket, $175,000. But one of the things that we discussed, and again, because we, when the CIP meets, they don't know what the needs are of all of the various groups in town that are gonna come forward. We would like to suggest the committee put it on the list, and then obviously if we couldn't do it all at one time, that we would identify, you know, a sequence under which we could, you know, depending on what they give us, how many $5,000 units can we replace? So that's the first. And then if you've ever gone to an event at the high school and you go from the, from the top where the door is, and then you head down toward the parking lot, near the football field, you're unsteady on your feet because, and it isn't you, it's the stairs. They are just not pitched correctly, I don't think they were ever really put in correctly. And, and I know for myself, who always move too fast in my high heels, that, you know, I've almost taken a tumble down there many times. But even if you're going slow, it isn't, it isn't, it isn't safe, in our opinion, long term. So one of the things that we would like to do is to replace, take them out and really put them in correctly. And that, there is a missed, a typo here, a significant one, it's not 3,500, it's 35,000. So that's a little bit different, I realize that. Just, you know, it was a typo. And one of the things that Rob and I chatted about is, you know, we're obviously getting ready to put the new turf field in, and there's gonna be some overall improvements, retaining walls and things to that whole site. So this would be really great to do at this time because it would be in the same year as we were really looking at that whole area and the whole field. So it would be great if this could be tied in because it's not provided for in the allocation for the turf field and the installation around it right now. So it does need to be done, and it would be nice to be able to do it at the same time and tie it in so that it fits in with the overall landscape as opposed to looking at it as two separate projects completely. But the turf field is due to be done this summer, April to July is when the work is supposed to be done. So this would, would be in the same fiscal year. So those are the two projects that, you know, we're, we're suggesting you consider.
Can I just say?
I just wanted to add one thing. And the rooftop units, we replaced some this year, and we had to, we didn't budget for it, so, but they failed. And so they were interior classrooms, yeah, we took it out of our maintenance budget. They were interior classrooms that, we had no option, it was the week before school started. So, you know, 5,000 a whack, I think we did at least two, if not three. That really takes a hit into Mike's budget, that's only $100,000 to start with. But we had to, we didn't have an option. They're interior classrooms, the airflow wasn't, you know, they weren't gonna have airflow. They failed, they, you know.
So can we get them?
The old ones.
The old ones.
The old ones failed. They failed. So like, so then we, we're ready to start school, and you can't have kids in those classrooms, so we had to just take it out of Mike's operating budget, and, you know, it's not a great plan when you don't have a lot of money to start with.
Well, the first question I was gonna ask about replacing the steps when I looked at this, but I think my, my question has been answered because of the amount of money. When it said 3,500, I was thinking that it was gonna be Mike and his group fixing it, but now I understand that it's gonna be.
Yeah, that was an error.
So we'd send it out to bid and have a actual.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely.
I'd just like to say I'm really excited about both of these suggestions because I've had personal experience, you know, with the, with the air conditioning in the high school. My son and I went to have a teacher conference in June up there on the third floor, and it was just roasting. It was, I mean, you know, it was with a teacher who was in a shirt, tie, and he, I mean, we were all, it was.
But it was in a room that supposed, should've had an air conditioning, you're saying?
Well, you know.
Well, we don't have, we don't have air conditioners, this is not an air conditioner. This is a, this is a, a unit that ha- it's like a ventilator, you know, it brings air.
It's not cooling.
So it's, it's, we don't have windows in those rooms, they're all, they're interior classrooms. So in order to really have it be comfortable in those rooms, you do have to have these working fans on the roof.
Yes.
So it, you know, I, I consider a little bit of a health and safety, you know, situation. So, you know, depending on how much money might be available, what we would do is we would prioritize, you know.
I think it was also on the original list of the high school project, originally.
Well, that's why I said it was.
It was one of the ones we said maybe we could, you know.
That's right, it was on the original list, but then when you start looking at the cost of replacing, you know, the full roof, and you look at, you know, many of the construction kind of things that we have to do.
Drainage.
Drainage, you know, we, we got to the point where we said, well, maybe we're gonna need to look at some other town funding for this, and everybody agreed at the time that CIP would, would be a, you know, a good source to, to go to for consideration.
So I would just be in favor of more air quality control in the high school. And then going to the steps from the high school, going down to that lower field. My husband and I have been going up and down those steps for years and years, and every time, Tom, who's very into safety, safety is formal, he thinks about that a lot in his business, and, you know, he just says, this is a safety hazard, somebody's gonna fall here. Something has to be done about this, every time we go up and down.
I know, they have tried to fix it over the years, they have done a little.
Yes.
Fixing to, to make it better, but.
My understanding from Mike is the whole thing needs to be ripped out and rebuilt underneath.
Because I think you're right Barbie, I think there's been, you know, when they did the Mike Donahoe work, there, I think there was an attempt to try to shore them up, but I think the problem is, is foundational. You know, it's, it's from the, from the base up, and I don't think there's really a fix to it, other than to complete replacement.
And I think that's a pretty accurate price because he had the person, the contractor, come out that did the repairs to the ramp and the pearly stairs, he came out. So it's not, you know, Mike's not just ballparking it, he had a guy come out, look at it, give him the price, so.
And just one more suggestion for an idea for this list, which I think I've mentioned before, which, you know, the driveway, going right in front of the high school that goes back to that back parking lot, there are some potholes or some, you know, metal that comes up that just looks like it's kind of not doing good things for tires, and we've.
You mean like the manholes?
Yeah, manholes, it's not a smooth surface.
I agree, I park that every morning.
I worry about my tires every time I drive over it, so.
It's always a bump.
It's always a bump. I don't know, you know, whose responsibility that is, but if it.
I might fall onto.
Yeah, we can check with Mike.
Such a list, that would be great. So do you have a pri- do, does, do either of these, in your mind, you know, take a higher priority than the other? Or pretty much do we want to try to argue for both and then see where we go?
Well, the 35 units are all the same age?
Yeah, I think. I believe they are.
They are.
They were done, they were done, what, in, in ninth?
No, I think, I think they were older than that.
You think they're the original to the roof?
I thought so.
They could be.
I can't remember that though, from the committee meetings.
Yeah, I can't remember it either.
I like your idea of breaking it down into a third, and I, I think they're both important. And if you did a third plus number two, that would get my vote.
So what, a third of the, the air conditioning units you're saying, and then go for the 35?
If it can't all be done.
If it can't all be done.
If it can't all be done. Yeah, then we could, that would be.
But, but you feel like, you feel like some combination?
Yeah.
You know, so that we have both, are able to get both done, is that what you're?
I think so, I, I think the stairs are, they are health, safety.
Have you been up and down those stairs?
No.
The step falls from under you.
I want them fixed before I have to go up and down those stairs.
Yes, lady fix it.
So the air conditioning units, we, we pretty much know.
They're not air conditioning.
Well, rooftop air conditioning units.
They should be HVAC units, really.
Yes, they're HVAC.
They, um. So Mike just thinks that they're coming to the end of their life?
No, the, when they did the evaluation of the high school, they said.
I forget when they said that, I, I know they, they said that that was on the list.
We've, we've put money into them already repairing them.
Yeah.
The ones that failed this, at the end of the summer, the cost to repair them was so outrageous that the guy that.
Is it old?
Yeah, the contractor said, you know, you really should replace them if you can replace, and then he, you know, I guess if you, if we were gonna do a third, a third, and a third, would have somebody evaluate each unit to say which ones really need to be changed this year. But it was, it was done by the contractor Mike works with, but also by whoever worked for DRA that evaluated the whole project, that said they needed to be replaced.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it was on the required list, I think it was on the optional list.
That wasn't on the.
Which tells me that they're not, probably not all failing at the same, the same level, but they do need to be replaced.
And they're all the same age.
It's a maintenance issue that, those are things you have to, yeah.
Okay.
So what, we, we wouldn't, we do, we would need a vote on that. Okay, well do you, do you guys feel the same way, a third, if they won't cover both? I mean, we'll go in with saying these are the two.
Maybe you could say these are the two priorities, and, you know, and whatever, just say as presented, and then we, we, I think we get the, the gist of what you're, what you're looking for. That you don't want us to just say, oh, you know, just do the air handlers and let go of the stairs. You'd like us to figure out a way to do both, to some extent. So they're both a priority.
Right. As long as you have the assessment, two of the ones that are in the worst condition, so that, yeah.
Do we have an idea of how much it, is, should be budgeted for all of these? I mean, how much money could potentially be allocated?
No, no, I mean, for, in CIP, money to cover these.
We don't know, we don't know, because we don't know is what other, we don't know what other, you know, I mean.
Off the road.
Somebody might wanna truck, somebody, you know, I mean, I don't know what the other, and I don't know how much money they, I know that in the, they had a calculation at one point where they took like a third of free cash, and then a third went into stabilization, I mean, they had a formula. So I don't know what the ultimate amount they're working from right now, but that's why we have a CIP committee. So they, they take a look at all the needs.
Well, I think it's, like you had mentioned though, I think it's in the 700,000.
It is, but I, but I don't think they.
But we don't know what the other groups.
But the point is, I don't think they would say 700,000 in free cash would be used for CIP. They, they will, they will take a portion of that, and they will apply it. So I think because we just don't know, we're, you know, I think if you say, you know, the, you know, that you would, you would want to have both the parking lot and the replacement of as many rooftop air handling units as possible fixed, you know, then, then at least our rep would know. And Joan and Mike are ex offici- ex officio members, so they, they would represent what the school committee wanted. Sounds like there is a consensus around that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it all sounds necessary to me, but I, I'm not, you know.
Well, those are, those are the two.
Those are the two that Mike, right, that really Mike, you know. We asked Mike to evaluate everything, and that really was the two most urgent ones.
And I was at that meeting, the building committee meeting, when we decided to take it off under the project, and that's what they had asked, you know, that we do as well, look into the town.
Yep.
Any questions on it?
I do not.
Okay, so how will this motion look?
I think if you just say.
Make a motion to approve of number one, rooftop air conditioning units, and number two steps at the high school as per memo, December 9th, 2013.
Do we have to specify?
No, I think he's okay there.
Yeah?
That's okay.
Okay, so the Chair will entertain a motion to.
Well, he, he made the motion, so you just need somebody to second it.
Well, you were saying it low.
It's okay.
I second. I second.
So you're basically saying these are both priorities?
Yes.
And you'd like us to argue for those?
Yes.
And you seconded it, so now is their discussion.
Anybody? Are you all in favor?
Aye. Wonderful, thank you.
That's good, I hope that goes well.
Yeah, I do too.
The meeting's in January?
I think they're scheduling.
Mike said, I think that, like the second week of January.
Yeah, January, yeah.
I don't think they even, like, ended up with a meeting till the very end last year.
Well, I think, well, they didn't have a quorum. Now they actually, the news is they have a full CIP.
Yeah, I saw that.
Every board has a rep that is supposed to, so it's all good. Okay, so the second thing here is Margaret put together a transition plan for, for next year, and Donna's had a chance to review it, I think they have a meeting on Monday to even be more specific on what dates and times, you know, certain things need to be done. But I wanted to include it, I had said that this would be something I'd include in December, so I wanted to include it. I think, you know, Margaret establishes, you know, sort of a couple paragraphs at the top, you know, what her objectives would be through this plan, and then basically, you know, it's building relationships, become, you know, familiarizing herself with things by, you know, and I think she did a nice job laying out what she would basically do. And as I said, you know, Donna's, you know, it's, it's important that Pembroke have their, their year with Donna, you know? So, you know, I think these, these activities are meant to, to be supporting, you know, more informational than anything else. And obviously toward the end of the year, may, maybe there'll be a little bit more of direct involvement. But mostly it's information gathering and, you know, making sure. And then I think Margaret just went and did a faculty meeting and had a chance for the faculty to provide some information for her and to give her a little sense of what they are hoping for. So, you know, some of those things have already begun. And transitions are hard, you know, they're, they're hard. But, you know, I think if we, you know, plan for them, and, and, you know, plan carefully for them, then, and, you know, Donna and Margaret are both very committed to making sure that there's a great transition. So, you know, I think, I think it'll all come together, but it is important to have a plan. And so I wanted the school committee to be aware of the plan so that we can move forward with it. Okay, it doesn't require any approval or anything, it's just more informational. If you have any questions, I'm sure we can answer them.
I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to say that I was, it's a lot of work.
On top of it.
And work they both already have to do.
Well, that's what I was saying, I'm like, if anybody questions what the principals do, this is, I was amazed at the work that both of you put, I mean, I know you guys work hard, but seeing this, I'm just wondering, do you think that you'll be able to accomplish all this and? That's a good answer.
Thank you for saying that Barbie. Sometimes things on paper look really impressive. When you're living day to day, you just, that's kind of the light, and so it doesn't seem actually as overwhelming as when you write it down, and it's, wow, it's a lot of work, but there are things that we do anyway, you know, we, we often meet, so it's really just formalizing things that we've, you know, we'll plan to do, but as Carol said, some things we've already started doing, so, but thank you very much.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, and then one of the things that we discussed when we were putting together the agendas for the year, and if you recall back when we had our little retreat with Mike in Topsfield, he had said one of the things that's really important for the committee to do is to stay on top of, you know, the, the goals in making sure that, you know, you're informed about the, the things that are in the strategic plan and that, how they're being achieved. So we, we laid out over the course of the year, opportunities to have little presentations for you related directly to things that are in the strategic plan. So one of those, one of those is, you know, I think, you know, you know, we're all using this educator evaluation project this year, the new, new, new for everybody. And so one of the things that we wanted to just provide for you is a little summary. The first one particularly has to do with the professional development. We did front-end all of our professional development for the fall with this process. And I think one of the things that, that I think has worked well, to say, to start with, it is a very different kind of overwhelming, time-consuming process. And I think, like any process, the more you do it, the better you get at it, the more it becomes automatic. You know, it's, it's, we're still working through the logistics of how to actually implement it. Everything is new. I mean, we've always had observations, we've always had write-ups that principals have done. But, you know, we haven't always had a lot of participation from teachers. Teachers haven't had to do educator plans where there hasn't been a rubric that everybody commonly uses and, and feedback is given against that rubric. Goals from teachers, student learning goals and professional practice goals were not part, many teachers set their own goals, but they were not part of the evaluation process. We're using an online tool, or a tool to, to do it with automaticity. That's great, it's much better than writing it all out, but it still takes time to learn the tool, you know, figure out how to take time, and it's very, it is time consuming because in the old evaluation system, let's say you are a veteran teacher, the requirement would be that the principal would come in and do one observation, and then do a summative evaluation. Sometimes the principals would have the teachers submit, you know, some professional things that they've done that they thought they wanted to recognize them for as part of their evaluation. But that was sort of it. Teacher reviewed it, maybe had a conference, had any questions, they could ask questions, maybe they could write a rebuttal if they didn't agree, and sign it, and then they were good for two years. And non-professional teacher status, of which I hate that title, but that's what they're called, anybody within their first three years officially by the DESE, there, they had more, one more, which was a minimum, it doesn't mean you couldn't do many more than that, but generally it was a full class period. And the new system is based on unannounced observations more than, you still can do a whole class announced observation that's still provided for, and we do that with our, with our newest teachers, you know, that's actually provided for. But, you know, our veteran teachers, it's more coming in for 15, 20-minute unannounced observations. And there are ratings on the rubric and comments that get made, and, you know, I, I think there's trepidation. I think, I, I think I wouldn't be telling you the truth if I told you that everything was just great and everybody loves the new system. But I do think that there are positive comments that are being made, that teachers do, you know, most teachers, after they've gotten used to their principal coming into their room, although the principals always did walkthroughs, but this is different, they, this is different. This is where they're coming in with their computer, and they're maybe sitting down, and they know there's gonna be some kind of a formal write-up or, or comments coming to them. But they have the opportunity in real time to comment back and have a dialogue. The whole goal here is to have this be a conversation about teaching and learning and improvement and progress of students. It's not a got you, you know, you're gonna lose your job if you're not a perfect teacher, that's not the spirit. That's not how we're rolling this out, and that's not the message we're giving to the teachers. Although, you know, you change attitudes after you change behavior. So, you know, there's, there's still, you know, some fear around that, and the principals definitely are putting a lot more time into the process of supervision and evaluation than maybe they did in the past. Only because of all the demands of the job in addition, you know, that haven't gone away, by the way.
It sounds, Carol, like this has added demands to everybody. I mean, the teachers, it's creating more work for the teachers, it's creating more work for the administrators, right?
It is, but, you know, I, one of the things that we're. It is, uh, but, you know, I, one of the things that we're trying to look at it is, is, you know, that, that some, it's, it's positive work, you know, it, it's, you know, like, for a teacher to be able to say, um, I would like to share with my principal some artifact or something that, that I feel that I've done that, you know, I, I think meets this, you know, objective, no doubt it's more work, there's just no other way to, um, to, to look at it. But it's not necessarily bad, it's just, right now, we're just struggling with getting used to what it means, how to do it, and we don't have a right, although everybody seems to want to know how to do it right. We're, we're inventing that as we go along, because I, what I don't want this to be is simply a compliance activity.
Sure.
Okay, the state says we have to do this, we're going to check the box, we're going to do it as mu, you know, little as we have to. I, you know, I think if we're going to do this, we want to do it well and right, and have it be, and have it be useful.
In the spirit in which it was created, which is to professionalize teaching, I think that that's the spirit.
Right. Exactly. Exactly.
Comes from, but it, I think it creates a level of demand.
Oh, there's no doubt, it's, there's a level of demand, no, no doubt. Um, and then, so what, what I think we did with the PD that I, I think is going to prove to be a positive, and that is that, you know, when we started talking about the educator plan component, well, then we gave teachers time to do their educator plan, right? Then we talked about SMART goals, and then we gave teachers time to write their SMART goals, as opposed to saying, we're going to do five days of training, and then you're, then it, you're going to have to figure it out.
Right.
Because I, I don't think that we, that's how people learn, it's not what we do with students, so we shouldn't be doing it with our staff, so this way, we, you know, I think the principals deserve a lot of credit because they really had to deliver, so they had, not only did have to be trained and learn it themselves and realize that they were in the learning process, but then they were the ones that led the workshops at the schools. What we did do is we worked with a consultant from Teachers Twenty-One, Tracy Mara, who did a great job. Tracy would help put together the PowerPoints, the administrative team would meet with her, and so she'd sort of be training us as, as we did it, but she was also really helping us put the presentations together, and then the principals would deliver them, and then we would debrief them. Um, so, you know, I, part of the advantage of that was, you know, sometimes when you bring a consultant in and everybody listens to the consultant, and then you try to implement it after, so we've been learning together, and that has been the spirit that the teachers have seen, that the principals don't feel like they're complete experts in this, um, and so it does invite the opportunity for everybody to be open to, how can we make this work so that it really is, is accomplishing what we want it to accomplish? And then the principals, I evaluate the principals, so the principals, you know, have, we're doing, we're doing two team SMART goals, because many of our teachers actually are doing team goals, um, and, and that's, that's been encouraged in this new process, it's been encouraged if, if you have a team or a department, a grade level, and you know you're all working on a particular, you know, uh, element of the, um, one of the standards or an element from the rubric, we've encouraged people to, you know, kind of work together. So we're doing our student learning goal, and I presented those again to you, and I'll, I'm going to keep reporting on how, where we are with those. But, um, the student learning goal about really looking at the special ed subgroup, that's a common goal for us, and then just the whole of that, you know, implementing the whole structure of this evaluation and looking at it and evaluating it and, and, and moving it forward, um, as a major initiative, that's also a professional practice goal, um, that we've all identified that we're working on as an administrative team. And then the principals are working on a goal on their own for their building, based on their self-assessment, and then, you know, I've got like three other goals that we're working on, you know, as a district. But I, you know, I did want you to, you know, get a little bit of a, of an overview, and Julie, Julie actually, you know, handles the professional development, so she was kind enough to, um, lay out for you how we, how we unveiled this. We do also have, as part of our agreement with the GA, um, the GEA, we have a little steering committee, which is comprised of teachers across all levels and, um, some administrators, and, um, we, we've been meeting with that group to just give us a, a feeling of how it's going. Uh, they give us some ideas on what's the best way to, you know, roll some of these things out, and then we're starting in, after January, to work on DDMs, district determined measures. So administrators, we've been trying to put together our, our template of what we believe we're doing right now, because I think it's always important to start with what you're already doing, so people don't think, oh, it's one whole new thing, everything we're doing doesn't count, this is all new, no, no. There's a lot that we've been doing, because we've been very strategic, that would count as a DDM. There are some new things that we need to put in place, and that group will help determine with, help us to figure out the best ways to steer that. So it's very bottom, very bottom up in many ways, that there's, there's this organic thing that we're hoping will, um, help to build buy-in, will help to, you know, um, you know, just really make this a system that's going to work for us, and accomplish, you know, what we'd really want it to do. So it's not just a compliance activity where we report to the DESE, you know, what we're doing. So, if you have specific questions, I mean, any of the principals I'm sure could help, and Julie, and, you know, you've got Mike's here, I don't know, I'll put him on the spot, but he might be able to help you with a teacher's perspective, and Maureen as well. So, any questions or comments?
Can you just give me an example of what an artifact is?
Mm-hmm. If I want to take that?
Yeah, I'll try it. There was some discussion about that, um, you know, it was just talking about assessment tool, or, sorry, really, it's, it's any proof of your trade, you know, uh, examples of, of your assessments, examples of your content knowledge, um, so, elements that can prove what you do and how you do it, whether it be measurable or not. And, you know, as Carol pointed out, you know, this is kind of a convoluted process, and, and because it's new, um, I think a lot of districts are, you know, tweaking things, and we, we understand it's a work in progress, but ultimately, um, you know, I think it's a way for professionals to prove themselves. And I think that we all know of the negative stereotypes around education, and this is a way of, I feel, it's one way of legitimizing the profession, so.
Absolutely, that's fabulous to hear.
And I have to say, the, the union, I mean, I, I, I have a lot of colleagues, you know, and for whatever reason, it's become this very contentious, very difficult process with their, with their union and their teachers, and it just hasn't been that way here. Um, and I'm, I'm very grateful for that, and I think we've set a positive tone with it too, I, I don't think anybody's trying to, you know, um, trying to be heavy-handed in any way with it, we're, we're just really trying to all make sense of it and understand it. So Mike, I appreciate that, because that's, that's really important to hear from your perspective.
Do examples of your students' work?
That's example, that could be an artifact, absolutely.
Meeting, parent communication.
Sure.
Really is an element of, allows people to show off a little bit, here's what we do that is, you know, that, the sub view.
Well, I have the privilege of understanding a lot of the theory that informs a lot of the instruction that happens in the schools, and so when I see my daughter's work, I'm just like, oh, she's got a great teacher, she's doing it all right, and I think, and then I hear you say, looking for artifacts, and I want to go out and photocopy all the things that to me look like artifacts, proof that she is getting excellent instruction, so that's why I ask.
You know, I think that, I think this rubric, you know, and as we get more familiar with it, it's even going to help a little bit more, but I think if we look at, if we just look at proficient, and we look at the proficiency, um, the standard and what it says a proficient person in, you know, standard one, two, three, four, I think we'd all agree that that, if everybody's doing that to a high degree, it, the person would definitely be an excellent teacher. And I think having the rubric is helping people, because many, 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 all of our teachers do many of the things in that rubric without even knowing that that's what they're doing.
Right.
They, they, they just, they just do, but this is a way of sort of quantifying it, and, and it's also through the self, self-assessment, sometimes it helps people say, you know, I feel really, really confident and good in these, but you know what, I, I really think there's something I could do more for, you know, when I look at teaching all students, or I look at parent and community involvement, how I might be able to engage my parents in a slightly different way. So, it, it does give a, a framework for, for, for teachers to really look at their practice and try to determine, what are those things that I might, I might want to do, so I think that makes it a more authentic process in many ways. Because there's not one way to do it, there's not.
Oh, there's many ways, and that's, I think, what the brilliant, what, what you said, Mike, about raising the profession, is that it just brings to light the many ways, and the more we are able to, you know, reflect on what our practice is, and see that there's many, there's many paths up the mountain, right, and to see what they are, and then bring them into the light of day, I think it allows us to have better, allows teachers to have more professional conversations, you know, sharing knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we would say, right, is the conversations have, have really been fruitful and positive.
But it is work, it is, it takes.
It is work, and it's really hard sometimes, because teaching is pretty isolating, and I read all of the evaluations, and I have always read them, and, you know, while there are certainly suggestions that get made, oftentimes, you know, there, you know, teachers aren't used to taking feedback or dealing with a rating, somebody might say, you know, this, this particular situation is, needs improvement, right? And that, that can be very upsetting, you know, frustrating, you know, frightening to anyone, to anyone. Um, so I think that, that this, this process is one that we're really just trying to humanize it, you know, and trying to, um, to really help everybody understand that we all have things that, you know, we might be able to do better.
Well, it certainly points to this idea that education is a lifelong process for everyone.
It is a lifelong process, absolutely.
And we all, the more we engage in it, at any stage of life, right, the better our, we can be also in helping others to engage.
And, and it will get tweaked, you know, I mean, the process will get tweaked at levels higher than us, you know, um, and, you know, we're, but, but I don't want to be in a position where, where we haven't figured this out on our own and made it our own, and made it do, be something that makes sense.
Sure.
In, in an attempt to just comply with the regulation, because I just don't think that's the right way to do it, you know?
I, I, I think you hit the nail right on the head, I think that's the key to it, that this buying in on both sides and that it's working together on like that, is, is how it will succeed. I, I think you've hit it right on the head.
I mean, there's a lot to be learned about, um, you know, connecting text, test scores to teacher effectiveness, there's a lot of research out there that, that kind of indicates that that's dicey at best, um, you know, so I think one of the things that, that this process allows us to do is to look beyond just the test score, just beyond the MCAS or the student growth percentile, that there are opportunities through these DDMs, through, um, just, you know, discussion with cla, you know, classroom teachers through artifacts and those kind of things to really look at, well, what is real, what does learning look like, what, you know, what are ways that we can, can actually, um, look at teaching as much more than a test score?
Absolutely. And learning. It's more than test score.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you for, for listening, and.
Thank you for sharing.
Again, I, I, I have to say that I, I really, really, really am grateful and appreciative of all of the work that everyone in the district has done, and the, the ability and willingness to ta, be risk-takers, because it, it isn't an easy process, it isn't a clear roadmap, it, it is a little messy, but I think everybody understands we're in this together. You know, we're really trying to make this a process that's going to be valuable and useful. But there are growing pains, like in any new thing. Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have Donna. Yes. Donna, Donna. So do we need, do we need the lights for you, Donna, or?
If you want, I'll take the red so it will show up.
Oh, you did? All right, well, let's see.
Right.
Let's, let's see, let's see how that works. So while Donna's getting ready, um, you know, Julie, Julie did an overview, you remember, of our MCAS scores and broke it down a little bit by school. Um, and then it's characteristic at this time of year for the, for the principals to, to come in and talk a little bit more about their specific actions they're taking, to look at their results, um, so that's Donna's purpose today. Uh, she, you know, Pembroke was a level two school in the accountability system, out of level five, you know, so, so we, we're in level two because we didn't, we didn't meet the performance targets in all of the subgroups. So you, you had, in order to be a level one, as you recall from the discussion we had when Peter came, that if, they have to, you have to meet those, make those targets in all subgroups. So we're still working on our special education subgroup, and I think we had, um, a, a, some of our, uh, popu, our all student, our, our white students needed to be, you know, uh, increased in terms of hitting those targets as well, but they're doing a great job at Pembroke, and there's a lot of, you know, important initiatives that are happening there, and, um, you know, under Donna's leadership, over the seven years, this, this school has shown great improvement. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm sure, is it not working, Donna?
Looks like it's on.
Um, Mary Beth, would you mind sneaking in and just asking if she'd come out, thank you. You just need to read, it probably just needs to, oh, here she comes. Thank you.
F five?
F five.
Yeah.
I think you had it working before.
Yeah.
Technology, wonderful when it works, right? Well, while she figures that out, Donna, they, they, oh, there's something, no signal.
It's probably just recognized, I think. Yeah, I think it's on.
Okay.
So while we're hoping that it comes on.
We, we do have hard copies on if we have to talk our way through it that way.
So, you know, we, every year we get our MCAS data back in June, usually, May, we actually get, now we get it back a lot earlier, we get it before the school year ends, uh, in Rockville, um, so the teachers anticipate that, because they work really hard, and today, um, you know, we have an instructional leadership team, and I think one of the things that happened to Pembroke over the years is we've become better diagnostic teachers, and so we really know our kids well, so just, MCAS is another point of entry to understand how our kids are learning, if we have the right curriculum, if we have the right tools, and for our kids, so. Tonight, um, I wanted to go over how we use the data, look at the cohorts, which is always interesting, but I think when you see what they, we did as third graders, the very first time ever taking MCAS, and how they go into fifth grade, you see the growth that they make through the process, on the learning process, it's always interesting, and the areas of strengths, and then our SMART goals that, you know, continue to drive everything we do at Pembroke, so. We really take time to look at our strengths, because we think that's important, but we also take time to really look at, is, is there something that they're telling us about where our kids are really falling off, and I think we're going through a transition time with the common core, stimulus coming into play, and they're starting to put some of those questions into the MCAS, so we're making that transition in our curriculum too, with the young, you know, the vertical teams that Julie's organizers and so forth, that really trying to help, you know, make that coordination happen, so we're seeing that, um, and then we also use the data to think about, do we have the right curriculum, and what instructional models we're using. Uh, and then the last way we use the data is to kind of think about our kids, who are those kids, you know, are there any surprises and the things that we're seeing about our kids that we can, you know, do better, and then we use that, the MCAS, but we also use the assessment data that we do, and this year we're going to have the MAP assessment data, so we think we're going to have great sources of data, anecdotal data for the teachers, the assessments we do regularly, uh, three times a year, and then the MAP data to really help figure out. So, students are taking the MCAS for the first time, I just outlined our results, so you can see that, um, the amount of advanced, percentage of advanced, the proficient, and number of wanting kids, those are their first time ever taking MCAS, and I think, one of the things that we really noticed this year about our MCAS is that our kids, um, sometimes it's a language, because we, the way we teach is very authentic, mainly we try and make it that way. We don't do a lot of paper pencil filling in the dots, uh, but we do do the MCAS prep before MCAS, but, um, you know, the questions that most likely, what answers most likely, we don't necessarily use that language in our classrooms often, so now we've had to make that transition for our classrooms to try and use that language, so kids see that and question, what did, when they ask most likely, what does most likely mean? So, next slide is the cohort, so you look at the, um, the current grade five students, and it's always interesting, I think, it, because I've done this for, you know, seven years watching, you know, third grade, we just, we usually do fairly well, third grades at first, the test is very different, you know, it's their first time with the test, and number of questions they have, then in fourth grade, they up, they up it a little bit for our kids, and then they also have the long composition, um, which is a whole day process for our, our fourth graders, and then in fifth grade, they have English language ads, mathematics, and they also have the science technology, so, um, as you say, the advanced to proficient, we kind of stay a little consistent ads from the third graders to fourth graders, so our current fifth graders, but you sometimes see a dip in, um, fourth grade, and often we think. So our current fifth graders, but you sometimes see a dip in, um, fourth grade and often we think it's because of that long composition. Because it is a big huge part of the English Language Arts. And, but I do believe that that's always been a focus area of ours, the long composition. Um, and for years in the, in Massachusetts, it's always been that personal narrative, so this year they changed that. Luckily Julia came over and we've done some work with teachers about that, so it always was a personal narrative, so kids would start personal narratives. When they were first grade, second grade, everybody wrote a personal narrative and then they would never do it, again, I think they do it in middle school, never again in their life. So now they're, you know, we have.
For culture application.
Yeah, except for that. So now it's three types of writing, um, and this year it was a little different for our kids. And, um, so it was a different writing prompt, but our kids had the preparation, um, so we felt good about that. And then the current grade six, and I think this is really telling about our curriculum and how it works is that, you know, in, um, English Language Arts, sixty-nine percent. From the fourth grade, they went to sixty-two percent, we're advanced proficient. Now into fifth grade, it was up to seventy-one and seventy percent in math. So as you can see, our kids do grow through the process. But again, you know, um, it's only one, you know, one test, one time for our kids, so we try and keep that. Um. And then we have Science, Technology, and Engineering, which happens just in fifth grade. And this is an area that I know we've been focusing on, we do have a vertical team of Science, Technology, and Engineering. Um, and the vertical team, I think is, you know, we're waiting for the new standards to come out, uh, but you see consistent results, you know, only in the. Five again?
She hasn't given up on this. They've been waiting for those standards.
That, uh, and I think we're really looking at integrated units too, but, um, you know, really focusing on. On the scientific thinking, the critical reasoning for our kids and the scientific skills that kids need and then being able to write about it. Cause that's often what happens. Um, and that's a cumulative, so this is fifth grade, so it's cumulative K to five. But what our fifth grade teachers often do is they go back through all the things that they've learned just to give an overview. So kids have that knowledge going into the MCAS. And, and the MCAS happens, just to give you perspective, they do it in March for ELA. Then in May they do math and then they do Science and Technology and if you know, fifth graders in May. Just five weeks before when they're thinking about, you know, it's just, it's a hard time of year, not that I'm making excuses for them. We really push them and then, um, but it's, you know, it's May and that's, I would hope and, I would hope they would do it earlier in the year. I would love that as opposed to May, but.
But do you think if they did it earlier in the year that the kids would be prepared? Cause those fifth grade teachers are having to gra- having to take everything that those kids have learned.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering like.
Why they do it, I'm sure.
That's why they, they do it that time, but I don't think there's an ideal time necessarily.
No, I agree, May is, is tough, but then I think like could March be?
March comes early, comes right after April vacation and that's when we do the ELA and then no sooner than we finish the ELA, we go April vacation.
Right.
And then we're back getting ready for the, the math, mathematics, um, so. The key terms, we just put CPI, which is the composite performance index, which is reported to the district. And the one that we always look at as, as a student growth percentile, you hear me talk about it that often. That's an important, uh, component for us and we talk about, you know, to our teachers, we talk about kids being at that forty or sixty percent growth percentile. That's our target for every kid every year and if that's not happening, then we really look closely at, um, you know, our particular kids and our students in the population. And what things are happening. And I put the CPI for us students and how it's grown over the years from two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen. And, um, so you can see the CPI scores. And then you can see the growth percentile. Which is interesting about the growth highlights is, um, if you look at the mathematics in two thousand nine, we were at forty-two percent. Two thousand ten, we're at thirty-one percent. That's when we changed, that following year is when we introduced everyday math and we changed our curriculum. So sometimes MCAS, or most of the time, I believe MCAS drives our curriculum. Curriculum, you know, are we have the, do we have the right tools in the hands of our teachers? And as you can see, there was a, a significant, uh, jump. But again, we still have to continue to know one curriculum is the be all and end all, so we continue to have to, you know, enhance our curriculum. And then by our subgroup, because that's a focus of our, us as administrators this year. And it's also because, you know, level two, we really look at our growth percentile of our subgroup. And in English Language Arts, we went from thirty-one percent to thirty-five percent, which is about four percent growth percentile. And in mathematics, we went up twenty percent, which, which is, I, I felt.
So, you know, you, you can't ask kids that are at the warning level to go to the proficient level.
Right.
In one felt swoop, so that's part of what, what the schools do is they look at that needs improvement category. Cause there's a difference between a student that's at the high needs improvement and the low needs improvement. There's just a difference in the skill set, in their, you know, resilience as learners, confidence, there's a lot of factors. And then there's the kids at the warning level and if you've got a child that's at those bottom two levels and they make a growth, they, they grow fifty percent. I mean, what more can you ask of them?
Right.
Okay, I mean, so, so that, you know, if you do, if you read the research on, you know, linking test scores to, um, you know. Student performance and teacher effectiveness, a lot of times what you find is these are the value added, they're considered the value added, the student growth percentile. So it's more than just the number, it's what, you know, how, how does this all get factored in so that you accomplish something that shows truth? Show, really sho- truly shows growth.
So when we look at our areas of strength in ELA, ELA, I mean, it's all about reading comprehension, ELA anyway. We know that ninety-nine percent of the tests is, you know, a good percentage, I shouldn't misquote, but a good percentage of the test is about the reading comprehension. So the craft and structure, we were at the eightieth percentile, language anchor and vocabulary acquisition eighty-sixth. Um, in third grade, in fourth grade, you can see it continues that way. And we're, in writing and, um, production and distribution, we're in fourth grade with eighty-fifth percentile. And then, uh, vocabulary acquisition at eighty-five and then the craft and structure at seventy-seven. So that's where we think our strengths are. But the things we need to work on are again, which is interesting, the lang- the conventions of the standard English language. Which we know that's an area that we need to continue to focus on, uh, integration of knowledge and ideas. Um, key ideas and details where it's a strength in some areas, you'd see it in some questions where you did really well and then other questions we didn't. And it, it didn't really necessarily fall into a genre. Um, and sometimes it's just, you know, also the second day of the test. So it's, you know, the kids get tired and, you know, sometimes they miss a page, although we've really focused on that a lot to make sure they don't. Um, and, you know, those kinds of things, but we look at the writing anchor, the text type and purpose. That they have the que- they have that writing prompt, that they really know what they're writing to the prompt. Um, and then key ideas and details again in fifth grade and then integration of knowledge and ideas. So that's continues to be our focus in our classroom, we know that's the, gonna be the majority of the ELA. Um, MCAS and the POC going forward.
Donna, can a teacher give it back to them if they notice that they missed? So once it's passed in, but can they?
There is a prompt that they can say, um, please be very ca- there's a, yeah, prompt, they have to follow that.
Go back and check.
That's what our teachers complain about the most, is that, you know, we know that, but, you know, we can't do that. And this, I think there's just, the protocols are there just so there's no cheating.
Right.
Um, going on, but the teachers are really good about reminding them and following those protocols.
I'm just curious, I mean, not that, if you were to speculate about how, um. In a, in a, in an ideal world, you know, if every school district had the opportunity to implement the teacher evaluation. In this positive environment that you're trying to create here and you find that this is working. Do you think that's gonna have any bearing on the emphasis that the state gives to tests like these? I mean, if you're getting information from teachers, the kind of information that this teacher evaluation system. Where we really get an understanding of what works for kids, what doesn't work for kids. I, I just, it, I can't even tell you like how it makes me cringe to think about kids sitting in a room. Doing these tests and then these scores having so much weight. And I just think about my child. Like, when she's bored, if this is stupid, I know this stuff, she doesn't try. She doesn't. I hate to tell you that, but.
Well, I think the part that's frustrating sometimes for teachers is, is that particular day that sometimes kids don't perform to their potential and there's nothing, you know what I mean? It's just a bad day or something could happen at home and that's what, it's not really a clear indication of their, their. So we use it as a, a barometer for one entry point to success.
Yeah.
But we continue to look at other measures and then balance that off and really focus. Um, I think the teacher evaluation is awesome, um, you know, for us having good conversations about teaching and learning. Because it gives us an opportunity to do that and I think that's great. And setting goals, I think that's awesome for us to set goals and really be reflective. I think that's part of who we are at Pembroke now and I think that's what makes it easy for us. Um, and though the MCAS really, you know, the teachers get very nervous about it, they're worried about it, you know. And, um, we try not to make it about MCAS, we try not to talk to the kids about it, cause if we do everything we're supposed to, MCAS will take care of itself.
Absolutely.
That's a way, that's what we believe. Um, but that doesn't help on that day, you know, that doesn't help that day. And I know one of the things the third grade team is doing this year is providing more homework on MCAS type of questions, just so kids would have a practice with it.
That's my fear.
We don't teach to it in the classroom.
Right.
But as a homework, you know, at least you're getting a practice, reading a small passage and, you know, doing that kind of questioning. And that's the unfortunate, but I do, I lived in a time, you know, cause I'm old now, the time before we had MCAS. And before we had MCAS, everybody was doing what they wanted to do.
Right.
So you could do the rainforest in third grade, fourth grade, and you could write really well in third grade, but your fourth grade teacher didn't care about writing. So maybe I never did any writing, so I think the standards in the MCAS are good for that.
Right.
I just, I don't like the fact that it really defines property values and really, you know, really puts a lot of pressure on our kids. Those are the things that, and, and the pressure on our teachers too. So we try and find that balance and always talk about that balance, um, with our teachers. But our teachers take it very seriously and I think that's the most important thing, that they look at these, they take it seriously, they really analyze the results. They really keep anecdotal data on their kids from last year and they really follow through. So it, it's taken seriously and I think that's all we can ask. And then looking at our curriculum, do we have the right curriculum for our ki- our teachers? And that's, I really think, the most beneficial of the MCAS.
Well, unfortunately, it's not about teaching and learning. It's sometimes at, at, you know, the, the level at which these decisions are made.
I know.
It's really about, um, you know, if you think back to the history of where MCAS came in. The curriculum frameworks were, were launched as a result of folks in the business communities. In, in, you know, in the, in the legislature saying kids are not prepared, they're not coming out of school prepared. So the assumption was, well, maybe they don't have a standard curriculum, maybe it's not clear what kids need to know and be able to do. So they put out the curriculum frameworks, which they've changed a million times, but they, they put out the frameworks. And the intention of those frameworks was never to be tied to a kid's graduation diploma. It was a way to give districts guidance on what it was that they needed to be teaching so students would be able to be prepared when they graduated. But billions of dollars were pumped into education and then it became, well, how do we know? Cause, cause there were, there were districts that the shrink wrap stayed on the frameworks. There was no necessarily accountability. So then the accountability movement came in and then it's like, well, now we need to develop a test. But even then, the test was designed to measure, to show districts how well they're teaching the curriculum.
Yeah.
Right? It was really to look at the connection to curriculum, it was not meant now again, to be individually student driven. And then that came on and then the graduation requirement came in. So a lot of what you're dealing with here is politics. A lot of these race to the top districts, they're, they got in bed with the devil. Because really what it's all about was money. We didn't do that if you recall.
I know.
Okay, because, you know, we didn't do it. So, so a lot of the things we have the luxury to do now have already been sort of vetted in other poor districts that, you know. Really, once they signed on and took the money, they didn't have any choice. And a lot of these things were not ready to be rolled out, they had not been properly, you know, looked at. They had not been tried out to see what's effective, what's not effective before it got rolled out. So unfortunately, you know, in districts, we're trying to say, okay, we have to do this. But how are we gonna do it in a way that's gonna be authentic, it's gonna, it's gonna make a difference for our kids and our teachers? And we still have to report on MCAS, but you notice, we report on them, but we don't say they're the be all and the end all. We, we use them for what I think they're for, which is a lever for improvement, a data point, a way to look at improvement over time. A li- a way to look at the questions to determine whether or not our instruction is preparing students to answer questions. That are the kind of questions that are multi-level, are more analytical. Um, you know, making sure that there is writing going on in the classrooms and it's writing that's purposeful and for per au- audiences and purpose. So I think the direction is good. I think the way it's being used is not the intention of what was, what was conceived of when Ed reform started.
The way it's being used.
The way it's being used now.
At the, the Department of Education level, but not the way it's being used in our schools.
No, I think we're trying hard to.
I think that's a really important distinction to make, that, that what's happening in our schools is that we're, you know, we're using this. In the way that you're saying, as opposed to using it as the be all and end all to know how, just how good our schools are.
As a hammer, you know, we're not using it as a hammer, we're using it as a lever for improvement.
Yeah. So how are the, how are the kids in their preparedness to go since MCAS? Like have they shown that, okay, they're, they're better prepared to move on to the next level of education?
Well, I, I would say, I mean, I think Georgetown students have always done well. But I, I don't think anybody at the high school would tell you that having some direction from the standards is a bad thing. Well, we got a couple, Ellie, can I put you on the spot? You know, I mean, is your sense that the standards have been helpful as a teacher?
Well, it makes it very clear what exactly the students need to be taught. Um, in various areas, for me, English language, English language arts, it's very clear, um, you know, what we should be focusing on. So, um, I'm really glad that we have them.
Do you think, do you think kids are better writers today or, you know, have, you know, are they reading different texts and?
Yeah, well, yes, definitely. Um, I mean, we've all, we, you know, we have a mix of classics and new, newer authors. And we also have a lot of nonfiction and we're incorporating new stuff all the time. Um, but I do think they are, um, improving on writing, uh, all the time. Um, and because, you know, we have, like I said, we just, we have specific things that, uh, we can focus on within writing. Um, and it's not just all about the MCAS test. Um, uh, d- when something Donna said that resonated with me was that, um, you know. Even though, if we do what we're supposed to do, then the MCAS results will follow. And I've always felt that way, that, you know, it's not about talking about the MCAS every day and this is what's gonna be on it and things like that. It's, you know, using those types of questions in their, in the literature that they're already using. That they're already reading about and working with and things like that, so, so yes.
Thank you, Ellie, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So, I think it's, um, you know, we wanna keep kids excited and motivated and engaged. But I think when that test day comes, this reality is, you know, you're nine years old and the first time you're taking this standardized test. So it's, you know, it's challenging. So for our, um, English Language Arts, our strengths are, we read closely to ensure what the text says explicitly. Um, we analyze how and why individual events and ideas develop and interact over a course of a text. We've really worked hard on our open response, that's reading and responding and writing, um, we've spent a lot of time on that over the years. And then we continue to demonstrate improvement in the production and distribution of writing. With seven, at, an average of seven point three and the state is six point six. And the writing types of purposes were a little bit above the state. Um, so our action steps, we'll continue to align our English, new, um, English Language Arts curriculum frameworks to all grades. And, uh, through ongoing professional development days, we'll continue with interventions, small group interventions, that's one of our goals on our school improvement plan. It continues to be our goal, where we really target, we're excited about the map coming, we're, we're, we're really excited about the map assessments. And the way we get more information about our kids and the assessments we have regular in our classroom. We're gonna focus on key ideas and details in grades two and three, Maureen, our literacy coaches here tonight. We've had a lot of conversations about what that would look like and how that would change in our units. And then informational text, we know that's a big push in our common core and really doing that, uh, nonfiction. Um, we'll continue to, you think about the phrasing for open response questions, most likely explain why and using that language with our kids. And then I know there's a district goal to do the RTI formally, grades two to five. This year we're doing it just in grades three and five, but I know that that's definitely a goal for all teachers. They would love to see that implemented two to three, four and five next year in our school to really get at those kids and really help. Not only the top kids, but the kids that really need support. Um, and then we're gonna look at reorganizing our MCAS prep unit that we have to do the couple of weeks before and really thinking about the language that we saw. Cause they do release test items, so we're looking at that. Um, the most, uh, exciting thing for me is our instructional leadership team because we meet monthly and we really look at the data around our school. And it's just, it's just a group that, you know, would make you proud to be in this profession because the way they talk about teaching, the way they talk about learning. The way they talk about their kids is just so invigorating and everybody leaves that room just feeling really good about the things we're doing. But thinking about the things we can do better and I think, um, continue to use that team to really guide what's happening at Pembroke. Progress, monitor our kids through those interventions. And then learning walks, last year we did it with our instructional leadership team and we just planned on doing it with our whole team. Um, thinking about, you know, what's happening in third grade with writing. And is, and the second grade, grade team spend some time in the third grade classrooms and see what's expected of our kids from grades two to three and three to four. So we have that commonality of expectations, um, and think about our common core. So in grade five, uh, three to five, the areas of strength in mathematics, um, number and operations. Um, fractions and decimals, uh, geometry and algebraic thinking. We were in the top in some of them, but the. uh, geometry and algebraic thinking. We were in the top in some of them, but the, some of the questions come back. And then focus areas would be measurement and data. That continues to be something that we see coming up. So we're really spending some time this year looking at where it is in everyday math. And I know, um, one of the goals for some of our teams through this evaluation process has really been thinking about ways we have to supplement the everyday math and provide other things that may not get taught as much in the everyday math and putting that in there to prepare our kids for the MCAS. So that was actually our fourth grade team and I know our third grade team spent some time in fifth grade, really looking at that, the fractions and the algebraic equations. And really thinking about where it is in everyday math and is it getting enough? And what things are we doing in everyday math that we don't necessarily need to do and, uh, looking at that. Um, another area is, uh, again, geometry came up as a strength, but it also came up as a weakness. So it depends on the question. And so, which can be confusing about the MCAS sometimes. Um, so, but we know most of the MCAS math is all about problem solving. So we think the work we do with math exemplars that asks them to use what their knowledge, uh, their mathematical knowledge is going to help them become problem solvers when they attack, uh, open response questions in mathematics. And in fact, exemplars are hotter than they will see in the math MCAS. So, um, areas of strength, operations, numbers and operations, uh, geometry and concept of volume. And open response answers, our kids continue to show progress in math and our open response. We're really good about that because that was an area a couple of years ago, even before we had a everyday math, that I did, they just weren't even answering the question. They were just not even bothering. And now we're getting kids with fours, which is the top one, and threes and fours, especially when they get to fifth grade. So we feel really good about the work that, uh, they are doing for that. So our action steps for math are continuing the implementation of new common core standards into our curriculum. Uh, implement common assessments using the MAP and other information, looking at student work. Uh, we still continue to look at our exemplars from all, from grade level in saying, are we scoring it the same way and really getting good information? Um, continue with our intervention model that we felt, felt, uh, really helped is just be prepared for MCAS and mathematics. So our SMART goals are to increase student achievement and support high academic learning environment, successfully balances content and pedagogy across all content areas. And we want, where our goal is sixty percent student growth percentile. Um, and I think that is where our kids should show every year at least sixty percent. We hope that we can get that from our kids. And then narrow the proficiency gap for our subgroup of students with disabilities. That continues to be our focus. Um, and I know Donna Straight's doing a lot of work with our different populations and our programs. And that work is really translating into helping out in the classrooms too and the, the way we do inclusion services for our kids. And I'll just end you with some of the things that are important to us that beyond MCAS, that it's really important to us to spark a sense of belonging and passion for learning, innovation, social justice, and that we want to provide our kids with interdisciplinary curriculum. That's really important to us. That MCAS is, we don't drill, uh, drill and kill on MCAS. That's important. We want them to develop the skills where they can use their imagination and be creative, yet show compassion. And then, um, we want to excite kids to be able to learn and have that growth mindset. Because despite MCAS, we want them to always want to be learners. And that we know that we are going to make mistakes and so are our kids, but that's when we learn. And we're going to continue to work hard. Um, and we have a lot to be proud of and celebrate.
Absolutely.
I know, I was glad that you put that in there because it is, it's hard to go over these and see, but, you know, obviously nothing's perfect. But, um, you know, you guys have done a great job and so.
It's the teachers, yeah. They, they, they do yeoman's work, I tell you. They're tired right now, we're through the holidays.
They're tired.
They do unbelievable work. You know, I just wish you could spend the day with me. It's just amazing.
I'm available.
Come on over. I love it. I love what I see from my, as a parent of a Pembroke student. I just, I really, it, it's.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So gratifying, you know, to, to feel like, I mean, even on the days, the things she complains about, I think if that's what you're complaining about, you are in a good place. And to see her go into other contexts and, and to hear what people say about how she, how she problem solves. I mean, I just picked her up in art class this afternoon and the teacher couldn't stop talking about what she brought. And I thought, it, it's not, it's, it's part of like how she views, how she just attacks the world, you know, or goes out into the world. And I think it has so much to do with what she gets as Pembroke.
And we believe that we want our kids, they're our future. We want our kids to believe they can make a difference in the world. That, we always push that with our kids. That you can be the change. You can make a difference. You do matter. And really thinking about the ways they can, small ways now, but we're hoping that's big ways later on.
Right.
I've spent years at Pembroke, you know, with my children.
Get that message through loud and clear. I know.
Pembroke is such a special community. It was very, very hard to, to leave it when my youngest son graduated out. But yeah, just so many wonderful, dedicated teachers that care so much about every student. I've always been, I've always loved to just walk into the school, you know, and see what I see. Thank you, yeah. You're doing a great job.
Donna, can you just, on, on the grade five cohort results?
Yep.
So am I reading it correctly where?
Current grade five or great, current grade C?
Are you on page three?
Current grade five, I'm on page three.
Yeah. Yep.
So current grade five, beginning in grade three.
Yep.
Seventy-four, seventy-four, seventy, sixty-four.
Yep.
And then the needs improvement, twenty-three, nineteen, twenty-six, thirty-four.
Yep.
And it seems like they're trending in the wrong directions for both of those?
Yeah, and I think what we're seeing is that there was a transition, what we believe, um, is there was a transition to the common core standards this year. And that that's why the fourth grade team made their, one of their goals for their supervision evaluation. Is that because of the nature of everyday math or it cycles through, that we weren't getting enough cover, uh, in, instruction in key areas. And so what they've done is supplemented, but also pulled out things that don't, not necessarily are out of standard for that grade level. Um, so we recognize that because of this. That's where MCAS is really valuable for us, is really, you know, now, okay, what happened here? What are we looking at? And I think they really went back and looked at the questions, looked at the standard and said, yep, we need to fix this. And they actually made a goal of supervision evaluation. That was one of their student learning goals. So it kind of all works together. And when it works like the other like that, I think it's valuable. Yeah, we saw the same thing, Rob. We were just like, whoa, what happened?
And, and it sounds like you, you've responded pretty directly and forcefully about that.
That's one of the nice things about having MCAS through the years. It used to be only four, eight and ten, and we really weren't ever sure how to, you know, how to use the results.
To like what the, you know, this is great in terms of it feeds the school information about the curriculum they're using and how you need to adjust it. It doesn't tell you anything about whether the school's a good, a good school or not a good school. And, and the way that the state uses it to, and the property, like you said, that, that's a misuse of the data when it, it, it is rich for us. It serves a purpose, but it's not the purpose that it's often used for.
We tell the kids that the state's going to see how awesome Pembroke is, so give you very best effort. We try all sorts of tricks to try and get a little bit for that.
And the goal is that the longer you have kids exposed to a standards-based education.
Yeah.
And you intervene in places where you see results.
Yeah.
That's why you see the results at the high school. Not to take anything away from the high school teachers and everybody that's there.
No, but that was my point.
But the goal here is, is that you, you'll see students that are struggling in fourth and fifth grade, that by the time they get to high school and they take the test in tenth grade, they're, they're passing that test.
Well, I think that was my point when Peter presented, is that there's that, this longitudinal story about what this district is doing. That is so powerful.
And if we didn't, if we didn't get any data that was meaningful to us, we wouldn't be able to necessarily make those interventions in the way we do.
Really. That's how we use the data is when we see stuff like that, that really helps us.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Do you want to do Peter's exam thing? That's quick.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Peter, that is quick. Can I come up? We're going to do your exam thing.
Oh.
Peter was at an eighth grade, uh, parent informa-, what, what was it you were at, Peter? Some kind of parent information night or something?
Yes, uh, our annual eighth grade parent information night.
Oh, to go to the high school?
Yeah, already.
Yeah. Applications are out already to.
That's right.
Drive for school.
Yes.
Okay. So they have a memo here.
This was interesting. What we would like to do is, um, we want to reinstitute, um, the exam system, the mid-year and final exam system in the middle school. So what we like to do is prepare the kids in the middle school for the exams in the high school. So we, it's a very slow and gradual process. In the sixth grade, we don't do any. In the seventh grade, they only have a final exam, but it, but it, it's not cumulative. And it doesn't count as ten percent of the final grade like they do in the high school. And then we, we step it up a little in the eighth grade and they get a midterm for the first time, but that's not cumulative. And it doesn't count as ten percent of the final grade. And they get a, a real final exam in the eighth grade that, that is cumulative and it does count ten percent. So that they're ready to, to, to go in high school. So in order to do that, we want the eighth grade, we want them to have midterms and they need a half a day on the twenty-fourth. So the high school already has the half a day. Uh, we're asking that the eighth grade have a half day. And, uh, that half day allows, uh, makeup exams in the, in the teacher's time to correct the exams. And then the, the grade six and seven will have a full day.
So what is the percentage that the midterm does count?
Um, it depends on the teacher, probably like a, like a test grade.
And, and this?
And it will count as for quarter two. As opposed, yeah. In the high school, the mid-years are ten percent of the final grade. So on a, on a full year course, it would, you know, each quarter would count twice and then the midterm would count once and the final would count once when you figure the, uh, final grade.
So will this impact the sixth and seventh graders at all? Would have an eighth graders have a half day and them having a full day?
Well, they won't like it.
No, the bu-, you know, the bu-, the buses, the buses don't come early anyway. The buses come regular time, which is not a factor. Um, the, the eighth graders would be on their own getting home. That, that is the, the only thing.
How do you think, how do you think that will go over?
I don't think it'll be a problem.
No?
I think they will love it.
Yeah. Alert all the pizza places in town.
Yeah.
And Johnny's.
Johnny's, right.
Are there any other downsides to that, Peter, that you can think of?
No, I think it's all good.
Does anyone have any questions about it? So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the proposal to move midterm exams to January twenty-first at the twenty-fourth, twenty-fourteen. And to change the half-day early release for students in grades eight through twelve from January twenty-ninth to January twenty-fourth at the middle high school as presented by Principal Peter Lucia.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any questions? All in favor?
All.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Julie, and your, and your cohorts. Ladies, so also in the spirit of updating you on the goals. Um, as you know, Julie's been working on vertical teams now. This, this was a vertical team for two years. This is the second year. She's got some friends with her.
I do. I wanted you to be able to put some, um, more faces to this than just mine. We've had a lot of work, a lot of help.
Thank you, Maureen and Ellie.
I'm hoping this will work.
Thank you. I'm so excited for this.
It is exciting. It's so much fun. We're having a great time with it too. So.
It's not working? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, there, somebody's coming.
You, from here. But not before it's done, I'm sure.
Somewhere else?
Well, I mean, can, they have it in front of them?
Well, you do. You do. You have it in front of you. And hopefully we can get this up and running.
The old-fashioned way.
We will. And that's just fine. Um, I have Maureen O'Conne here. She is our literacy coach at Pembroke School and she works with grades two through five. And Ellie Vier is our English department head at the middle high school and she works with grades six through twelve. So I thought you would get a nice, um, span. We have most of the grade levels, uh, here in that sense. I, I didn't think, um, I didn't think we'd want to have, drag everybody out tonight. We have sometimes up to twenty people in, in, on the vertical team. And so it's been a great success in that regard and, uh, we're very happy about that. So just to give you a little background on the English Language Arts vertical team, we started about a year and a half ago. Um, working really within the documents, the new framework documents and trying to get a sense of what transitions do we have to make at every grade level to support, you know, the changes that we're seeing come out of the state. And, um, the work has been, it, it's, it's a lot of work. It was a lot of work in that sense because, um, our document shifted. I don't know if, for those of you that have taught, um, before standards, pre-standards, you know, and Donna alluded to that a little bit earlier in her presentation. Um, it was different at every grade level, you know, who taught what and to what extent and, and what that looked like. And, um, when the frameworks first came out, um, back in the day, um, they came out in grade level spans. And, and we spent years on vertical teams and, and, you know, in department meetings trying to identify who taught what. Um, because of the grade span, it would be three to five, you know, and, and the grammar component or the reading component or the writing component would be in this giant span of time. And so it was hard to clarify exactly what those expectations would be. So it took a lot of work and, and many years to really lay that out. And then, you know, ten years later, here we are with new standards. And finally, they're at grade level and, uh, we are happy for that. But that's, that still does require us to take a look at what are we teaching at each grade level and to what depth. And, and I, I would say depth is the key word, um, in terms of what we look for as we, as we roll into the new standards and the units. And, and looking at assessments as well. So not only did ELA get the heavy burden of the, the new frameworks, they also got three giant appendix documents that came along with it. One was a research document and we, we read through that and analyzed that. Um, another was a, a text exemplar document, which was probably a hundred pages longer. And that identified key texts that we could look at at each grade level and to, you know, consider thinking about implementing at each grade level. And, um, we also had to learn about text complexity and what that meant and what it looked like. And, and how were we addressing those expectations at the grade levels as well? In addition to that, we had another appendix, um, document and that was the student writing exemplar document. And so we had to identify what are the three modes of writing in addition to research writing that we're doing at each grade level. And what does stu-, what does, um, the appropriate grade level student writing look like within those domains at each grade level? And so I would say, in a nutshell, that took six months at least and a lot of reading over the summer in addition to that. To really grasp what these standards were asking us to do and think about. And so it, it's, it's been really exciting because it's helped us clarify, um, what our expectations should be. But also it's helped us to determine the path that, that we, um, will be following. And so we did a lot of things. We, we did those things as well as looking at MCAS trends and data trends over the last ten years. Um, determining the grade level shifts and expectations that we talked about. We, um, have been doing a lot of work with writing rubrics and trying to identify, uh, what is a clear path in terms of writing. Um, and, and what should we be asking students to do at every grade level and, and how can we teach to that? What, what kind of teaching do we have to do to get to that place? Um, we've looked at model units and we are continuing to look at them and we'll talk about those in a few minutes. Um, and we're also looking at the new PARC, um, assessment. So not only are we working within the, the MCAS world, we're also preparing for the PARC. And so, in a nutshell, there's a lot going on. We're very busy. Very busy. But it's, 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 it's a lot of fun, I have to tell you. It's, it's not, um, it's not terrible work by any stretch. So I wanted to show you, but I will have to tell you tonight, um, some of the key shifts that we noticed in our work. And, um, the first shift that we definitely identified was there is a very strong push for, um, exposing more students at every grade level to informational text. And that is something that has been, um, we have always done that, but maybe not to the extent that the, the new frameworks is expecting us to do this. And so whereas we may have taught thirty to forty percent of informational text, it's expected to be fifty percent or more at each grade level. And so how do we do that? How do we, what do we use to expose kids to informational text? How do we use it? Um, and how do we link that to some of the existing texts that we're already using so that it makes sense to kids? Because you can throw out informational text all day long, but you have to do it within context and make sure that it applies to something. And, and that it works well within the minds of children, I mean, in addition to all these things. And so, um, what our expectation is through the work that. And so, um, what our expectation is through the work that we're doing is to help students build content knowledge through informational text. So it's not just reading an article and, and answering four multiple choice questions and writing a short response. It's really building in the content within that informational work. So, um, we have more students doing science reading in ELA or ma- you know, mathematical reading or, um, social studies. Or, you know, civics and world cultures and things like that. So that it's not something that's separate from, but in addition to the work that they're doing. And, um, we're also asking to think about this, the strategies that we're asking students to apply to gain access to that information. Reading informational text is difficult. It's a different skill set. It's not reading a novel, it's not reading a short story or a poem. It is really applying active reading strategies throughout that work. And, and being able to have the motivation and the stamina to do that kind of reading. And so that's the, the additional piece that we're looking at. How do we make sure and support our students with that, that level of work as well? And, and we've done a lot of work with landmark and, and really building in, uh, language-based strategies. And, and really trying to support, those, those, that's best practice work right there. And so really trying to take those strategies and build that into the, the everyday lives of students that become second nature to them. And not something that's in addition to what they do now. One of the other shifts is, um, knowledge in the disciplines. So it's helping, um, other teachers, not just the ELA or reading teachers, understand that we're all teachers of reading. And we're all supporting students in their reading. Because I am guaranteeing you that all students are reading in every content, um, when you think about it. So it's trying to help other teachers outside of the ELA domain or reading domain, um, figure out what are the best strategies that I can use to help students read in social studies? Or in math or take notes, um, and, you know, and learn vocabulary, all of those things. How do we help other teachers who haven't probably had that formal training do that level of work? How do we help kids find evidence and cite it and respond to that in writing? Not just in ELA, make sure, how do we make sure our kids are taking those skills and transferring them? I mean, I'm sure you could speak to that. Taking the reading that they're doing and the skills that they're doing in a reading workshop and applying it when they're reading in science and social studies. You know, that's, that's definitely important.
I mean, I feel like this is kind of when we were just talking about MCAS and how you're reading a passage and you're answering questions. I mean, this is what we're talking about. It's not about preparing them for a, a test.
A one test, one, once a year.
Yeah, it's preparing them to really think about what is it that we're reading and to build it in other areas too. You know, and I'm, I'm seeing it in the seventh grade. I mean, they're, they're reading, they're reading the Golden Goblet about ancient Egypt. They're learning it in science, they're learning it in social studies. The depth of their knowledge is much deeper because they're having it addressed in every area. Now, in elementary school, we have, that's a beautiful thing for us. Because we're one, we are one teacher and we do teach every discipline. And so we can do that, you know? And so the model units are really nice and bringing in all of the, um, skills that we've learned in small group instruction. And our deep process writing and our deep reading, um, i- it really kind of goes hand in hand. But I think this, this, um, shift is exciting. And I think it's gonna make our kids really see the whole picture. Not just, I'm doing this reading passage to get it done. I'm really learning about what I'm reading and I can understand it from all angles.
Right. And I think it also will, you know, really prepares them for the next step in their education or in real, the real world. Um, wherever they decide to go. Um, because, uh, you know, we constantly are telling them that this, by doing this, by finding evidence and citing evidence and, uh, learning how to do that. And applying it to the other classes that they're taking as well, um, it's a transferable skill. And it's a skill that they're gonna need in college, or even if they don't go to college, they're gonna need to find evidence and tell their boss, you know, such and such to get to the next level or whatever it is. Um, so it's definitely, they're, they're starting to understand that this is something that will help them for their whole lives.
One of the other, um-
It's brilliant.
Makes sense, doesn't it?
I can't even tell you how many conversations like this I've had, but I'm just so happy to hear like, wow, this happens at my kid's school. Yeah, so.
This is more, we, her, resonates with her.
One of the other, um, shifts that we've definitely noticed is, um, we call it the staircase of complexity. And it's, um, it's really, um, working with students and, and identifying the, the text complexity that's out there. When our students leave high school and go into college, um, they're expected to read up to three hundred pages a week of dense, complex text. And so when they leave us and they take a freshman intro course, whatever it may be, and it's, it's a, could be freshman year all over again, you know? It, in terms of the transition from high school to college. So you're starting off as a new student again, but you're reading this depth of text and this text complexity that, um, you may not have had exposure to. And, and don't know how to apply that skill set to. And so the transition for the Common Core and these ELA frameworks, you're welcome to come right over here.
Uh, the transition has been, um, pretty remarkable in that it's asked us to really take a look at what is the depth of text complexity that you're teaching students? How can you get your students to read at grade level? And, and then delve within the depth of grade level text and what it should be? So it, it's really an incorporation of looking at informational text and looking at classical pieces of literature. And, and looking at, um, new nonfiction or new fiction. There we go. And, um, and trying to raise the bar in terms of reading and comprehension so that our students, when they leave us, um, can tackle that work. That's, that's our job. And, and we talk about that quite often. I'm gonna fast forward through here so you can see some of what I'm talking about. Thank you. Another shift has been, um, to identify the capacity for text-based answers. And so what that means is supporting students so that they can find evidence. It's not easy to read something informational and then find something to write about. So there may be certain questions that are asked in terms of, you know, respond to this in writing. And, um, many times, children have a difficult time finding the example. It's like finding the main idea, finding the key details, taking the key details and explaining why that matters and then forming judgments about that. Um, and so it, it allows us to help students learn how to work within the text, stay in the text. Um, and find information that will help to build your, your understanding of the, the work that you're doing. And so that, that's, um, that's a type of inference work that's very deep. And so we're looking at how can we help students, um, develop those habits to find information and use information, not only in writing, but in speaking and conversation? How can you, um, learn how to create argument that, that's based in something real? And so that, that's, that's a definite skill set, I would have to say.
Julie, I'm just curious, so is there research now that tells us, you know, developmentally, at what age a child's brain is ready-
Ready for inference?
-for this kind of complex?
It, it, I will tell you, just from the years that I've had in the classroom, you start to see it in the upper elementary and in middle school. The, the, the capaci- the beginning capacity for that.
Right.
For, for really creating inference and, and really learning how to build an argument and, and have it not just be because I said so or because I like it, you know? Or, you know, really looking into the, how, how and why do you like that and what does that really mean? But that's, that's a maturity thing as well, so.
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious, 'cause now I'm just so fascinated with neuroscience research. And so for all, so much of what we teach in schools, we're able to find, there's research being done that says, is the neural structure present? Or how do you create neural structure?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I just don't know if there's research done that looks from a neuro- a neurological perspective at what the brain is, is capable. And, and just curious if you know of that.
Well, I, I, I can't tell you off the top of my head, to be totally honest with you. I can tell you from my experience and I can tell you that we are looking at things right now. And, and one of the, one great article that we came across was how the brain processes reading. And, um, and Margaret's done a ton of research on that as well. And what does reading look like at certain ages and certain grade levels? What can we expect, um, from readers as they grow? And, um, one, one of the things that we're looking at and we're really thinking about is how, how can we think about informational text? Or any kind of reading that kids are doing when it comes to computers and it comes off the paper? So we do a lot of work, you know, in paper and we, we build strategies and our brain knows how to process that type of reading. What does it mean when students start to read online and students start to read, um, using iPads and laptops and, you know?
Are they transferring the paper really?
Are they able to transfer that? Because we, we think about it all the time when it comes to writing. Are students able to transfer what they know and can, if I say to, you know, a student, so tell me what you think about it? How would you write that down? What does it look like? Let's think about it if you, you know, give me all the examples and reasons why you think that. That may not be what they write, even though they can tell it to you, it may not be what they write. And so it's really kind of building the capacity to do that kind of work. And so we're definitely thinking about that.
And that's potentially challenging when we transfer to PARC, which is an online-
Right, right. These are definitely questions that we have and, and are-
Methodology is very different.
Really talking about, because this is, is really all about learning and, and the application of the skill. Okay. And so one of the, the other shifts, um, is writing from sources. Um, trying to help students learn how to make arguments and, just what I said, using evidence, but write persuasively. You know, that is a skill set as well. It, it, you know, we can all write down our definition of why we think what we do. How do you create that in a more persuasive argument is definitely another skill set. I'm sure that-
Well, yeah, well, yes, when they get to high school, I, I try to, to, um, sort of get them to start thinking about what, what their opinion is about a piece of, um, literature or, or a text. Um, and not just what i- it's about, you know, not just the summary of it. Um, and so there's a shift there. Um, so we try to, um, I try to get them to form an opinion about it and then write about that opinion, backing it up with evidence. And there's your thesis statement. But, um, but that's a process. It's a huge process, but once they got it, they, 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 the rest comes a little bit more easily. Because once they have that opinion, once they have that statement, they can, um, if they, you know, stick to it, then they can, um, find what they need to back it up, so.
In, at Pembroke, we've been focusing on the close reading, meaning that it does, it's not enough for you to say, well, I feel this way because, you know? Well, well, where in your article are you finding this? It's not just because Suzie Jones thinks this. You have to go into the text, find it right there and then put it in your words and explain it. So they're doing that all the time now. I mean, it's like a common occurrence. I'm seeing it in, in every classroom, yeah, so, um, it's beginning.
Right, and, and it will, you know, students will get better at that over time, especially as they mature. And they learn how to pull sources and they learn how to build ideas and arguments. But again, that's, that's a process as well. Um, one of the other things I think that is important in this writing from sources shift is, um, is really, I, learning that skill of pulling the right evidence. And so i- it's sometimes when students are writing and we say, well, can you go back and find an example of, of this character doing that? Or of this happening in the setting or mood or tone or whatever that may be? It's difficult for students to find the ve- the right piece of text, the right paragraph, the right line, the right, the nuance of it. And so that's something else that's, that's important, um, to teach. But, you know, it's like teaching voice, you know? Students have it, it's just getting it out there on a piece of paper.
Well, a lot of times they know, they know sort of what a text is saying and the gist of it. Um, you know, even just today, I was talking in one of my classes, we're reading Macbeth. And, um, w- um, I said, well, wa- you know, why is Macbeth fearing his best friend? And some, you know, somebody said, oh, well, because he thinks he's gonna kill him too. I'm like, so then I said, what words tell you that he's going to do that? What makes you say that? And I'm doing a lot more of that and all of our, all of the teachers are doing a lot more of that with all the shift too, to make sure they're getting, they're finding the words, the evidence. And then they can write about it.
That's all the essays are in AP English, like Mr. Murphy's my teacher and I like- It's just, you have to like-
Yeah.
Give the line, like, I'm making this argument and this is why line six, words, you know?
I just wanna make sure you all hear the parallels between what you're teaching in English and what you're being asked to do in your teacher evaluations.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's all, we're just creating a world of people who reflect on what they know and why they know it. Which I just think is so exciting.
It is exciting. Yes. Because I think for many years, we spent time not knowing why we couldn't get students there. And I think we're, with this advance in research too, that's been done in education, I think we're able to start to see some of the effects of why.
And those challenges, if these students are really learning this, they're not gonna have those challenges, 'cause they're already gonna have those reflective skills.
Right.
They're being taught them from such an early age that when they go out, it's so exciting to think about the future and the way they're able to think about the world and the problems and why they respond, the way they respond.
I always think it's a great time to be in education, but I, I really do know that even though it's difficult right now and we are doing so much work, it's really a great time. There's so much happening. It's a lot of fun. Okay, so one of the other shifts is a, a focus on academic vocabulary. How can we make sure that our students are, that we're using the right words with students? That we're, we're, um, choosing words that we know will be pivotal and will be found with other, within other contents as well? So that we're using, it's called domain-specific vocabulary. And it's vocabulary that may attribute itself to more than one content. So you're teaching students how to build, um, a language of power database. You're really looking at words and, and you're using them in many ways and many different capacities. We all know there are many definitions of words and it's all depending on how they're used and where they're used and within which content. And so we're, we're teaching students how to strategically address that and, and to use words, um, effectively. But within and across other contents. And, and so that's, um, that's pretty interesting because we haven't always had the capacity to, to think about, what does it look like across content? And I think that's what a major shift is, um, within this Common Core framework. It's really looking at how are we all doing this in some way? And how can we build those things together? So one of the things that we did definitely notice, um, when we looked through the new frameworks was that we needed to identify, um, where the responsibility lies within each grade level for teaching grammar. That is definitely a major part of the new, um, standards. And so we've isolated what those standards are and broken them down to two sections, parts of speech and usage of mechanics. And so we went through the grade levels and identified, well, this is what it looks like. I, I know the numbers on the right don't really mean anything to you, but to us, it reflects what those standards are on the left. And it tells us which grade level is responsible for layering and, and the depth of grammar over time. So that by the time, if you look at, you know, grades nine, ten, eleven and twelve, the expectation is that they've learned it by now. And so now they're applying the, the grammatical usage and mechanics that they've learned through K to eight. And so that's given us something to think about as well. And we do like grammar, so we are happy with that. English people love grammar, I will not lie. But, uh, definitely, it, it's important because it helps us look at the writing.
Helps you express your ideas clearly.
Well, I mean, you know, it all matches, it all goes together, you know? Here, uh-
As a proud, caring member of the NCTE committee here.
Okay, there you go. Follow that. So I wanted to show you, uh, this is the, uh, a huge undertaking, but we have identified writing rubrics. And they are a little frightening to look at, I know. But, um, there is a method behind the madness here. We identified writing rubrics that we could use across content for all grade levels. Because we're finding that as we look at student writing over time, students apply different skills to different content areas sometimes. And they're not pulling through, um, it, you know, our students do a wonderful job with writing, don't get me wrong. I'm not criti- criticizing that in any way, but there are many times where students do not apply what they would do in an English class to what they would do in a science class. Or a social studies class, or, you know, financial literacy class, or a research class. And so we're really trying to look at what are the key points that we want our students to use, um, across grade levels and, you know, in an upward spiral. And so we've done a lot of work with PARC and looking at what the PARC has given us in terms of, um, expectations for writing. We've used all the Common Core standards. Um, we've created the framework. And then we also have underneath this, if you picture a binder, underneath that, grade level expectations for writing. So that, um, our students can build their skills over time. So that's, that we have, we haven't given out the grammar guide or the writing rubrics yet because we're still finalizing them within the, the vertical team. But we're building a plan for creating some district language.
So this goes across disciplines? So that everybody in all the disciplines will be looking, using these- So this goes across disciplines, so that everybody in all the disciplines will be looking, using these rubrics to assess student writing and they'll understand it.
Because our students will be assessed across those contents. Isn't it? It is. Our teacher, our students will be assessed with these expectations across contents. Um, you know, as and in life, when they get to college as well and, you know, out in the workplace. They'll they'll be expected to be good, strong writers. And so um we wanna make sure that we're we're building in those places for them to. And and helping teachers too, you know, when we talk about English teachers, for instance, you know, we, you go through your graduate year, undergrad and graduate school. Very um rarely do teachers take courses in teaching writing. That's new and I would say within the last three or four years has there been a push for that. And so that's that, you learn it as you go when you study the content. But no one necessarily has taught you, here's what it means to teach writing, here's what it means to teach grammar, this is what it looks like, this is what you should.
Right.
Build on and so we felt like that was kind of part of our job to make sure that we built those components in. Because, you know, you can't, I always say to the vertical team members, we don't expect you to go back and get four undergraduate degrees that you can teach the four major function areas. And that's, you know, we we can't ask that, but we can help you, you know, build the construct for it. So that's, this is big and it's coming, but uh we wanna make sure that we do it right and we get it into teachers' hands the right way. And that um we don't put something out there that we haven't really had a chance to talk with them about first, so I thought it would show it here. But please understand that it's not in the hands of teachers at this moment. It's in our hands.
So Julie, right now, a student that has a a science paper. And what you had just said to me, it it stands out for me because I do see it in in children that they don't take the same. Amount of time to do a science paper that they would if it was an English paper. So even on a test, like an open response question, how is that teacher right now? Um look grading that particular response, like if it's not capital, if it's not the punctuation and.
And that that's definitely um one of the questions that we have, honestly. And and I think if you think about the elementary teacher, at least you're the teacher who has taught that, so you can, you can parallel that and understand where they are within it. You've probably seen it in the in the writing component when it comes to reading. Um, but when you're a content teacher at a middle high school, you are, you're you're within your content. So luckily, our department heads work really well together and and they do share information on, you know, here's what's important and this is why. But um it's hard to hold people to the same expectation if we're not clear about what that may be. And so that's, that's why we wanted to do something, you know, that would help clarify.
Individual teachers, right, in how they determine what they're, what's gonna go into the grade at this point. But this is gonna give it a little more structure.
Yeah, that they will be, you know, they could take off points.
Sure.
You know, if if it's not, because it's just, to me, if you're in even middle school, you know, you know to capitalize. You know, the first letters of a sentence, you know, where the commas go, you know, you know, you should. So the only way they're gonna learn that is if across content that people.
Yeah, and I think the teachers have some some work to do around what's the expectation. And I'm, I'll just use my husband as an example. He's a high school history teacher. And I wish I had a dime for every time he complains about how the kids in his history class, you know, when he gives them a paper. How they don't pay attention to the English stuff, but it's not his job as a high school hi- history teacher. He's to teach history, okay? So s- sometimes you see that, right?
Yes, oh, yes.
So some of it has to do with, you know, working, you know, with the teachers around when they talk about implementing this sort of. You know, so how do we share the responsibility, right? How do we hold kids responsible for certain things, no matter what the discipline is?
But it is different, like you said, like grammar school, you have one teacher, they know the level that you're at and that. Science teacher may not know that and they could be having.
Yep.
Problems that they're working with their English teacher on, but I don't know, it just seems to me that they, you know, when you make a mistake, right? How do you fix it when you keep on getting told that you're making it?
Right, yeah, well, we're hoping all those other components that we talked about help this process too. You know, and we're building in a grammar structure, we're building in, you know, um sharing work across content and across grade level. Then, you know, we're we're helping solve those problems and answer those questions because they've always existed. You know, it it's always been there, this, the difference um.
And it's even just having common language with all the teachers.
Yep.
And there, and those kids go in the other classroom, they're like, oh, you know about this. That that teacher told me that, you know, so um it is, if we're all, the vertical team has created a place for us. To to, it's awesome because we all come, I mean, I never got to talk to Ally about, you know, what she, what her, the work that she's doing with her kids. And it's been really nice for us to just have these conversations about what is our expectation. And um and again, that common language will be really important as we go forward.
Right, and I'm sure you'll see the students, like, when you get them, that they'll be more prepared. Because, because of the interaction.
Right, and and it allows people to move forward and into new things, you know, instead of kind of revisiting a lot of the things that. That we would have liked to have seen.
Right.
In in early grade levels. Uh, one of the big shifts um across the state, you know, it's funny how things come out. Um, the state adopted our frameworks in twenty eleven. Now, when we had the the previous adoption, I think it was nineteen ninety-nine, um of the other standards, you know, the the earliest version of ELA standards. We would get the standards, but then say, okay, now what does it look like in context? So what does it look like in a unit? You know, how do we teach this in a lesson? So now, um, the state has identified Race to the Top Funds and for the last two years, teachers across. I was actually on one of these committees when I worked in a Race to the Top District. Um, two hundred teachers to create model units using Understanding by Design format. Um, and they've been working for two years on these units and they are very deep, but they are very deep.
Very deep.
Very deep, but they really have done the work, which is great if you're in the curriculum world. Because you always wonder, I I say, you know, I wanna make sure I'm doing this right. That's how we feel all the time. I wanna make sure I'm doing this right. So the model units have been a great experience um in terms of work across the state. And that's been teacher-driven work. I am a huge believer in teacher-driven work. And um it has allowed teachers to learn the process of what does this look like and how do I build standards? Um, into an existing body of of a unit or something to that capacity. So the model units um are something that we're looking at vertical team. In fact, we have meeting next week and we're all looking at one at each grade level. Um, and determining what is the construct of this? What does it look for? What does it look like? What are the lessons? How um, what's the text being used? How does, how does complex text get um, you know, assimilated into each grade level? It's very interesting work, so I'm looking forward to that meeting because I think we'll have a lot of good things to share. And definitely um something to think about as we move forward. How, what do our units look like and how can we, how can we think about this in a different way? And so um that's, that's the conversation we're, we'll start to have this year. Uh, really taking a look at what are our unit trajectories and how does that work and compare that to some of the models the state's given us. It's the first time the state has ever given us anything. Um, honestly, that that really pulls together what the expectation is, so. Uh, that, you know, they'll, we, Carol and I get told all the time what to do and then we say, okay, how do we do it?
The ideal world, what would happen is you would develop the units. And then you would, you would cycle them out to districts in the right timeframe. But what happens is we're all moving, moving, moving and all of a sudden they insert this and you're like, oh, oh, okay, how's that connect? So they're great resources, but the timing of them is challenging, right? It would have been nice to have them at the same time as they were launching the standards.
Absolutely.
And, you know, if you're gonna use the model units and they're good, they're real, I think we agree, they're really good. Why do you make every district across the state develop their own units and then hand them model units that are really great? When you've done all the work to put these other units together, so it it's, it's really a timing. I ideally, it would be great if they could just say, these are, this is, these are the standards per grade level. These are the units of study you need to do and here are the units. Now you can put your energy in how you're going to teach them effectively. How are you gonna use them operationally with your students? That's, that's what they really should be doing, but what they've done is they're giving these. Some people are adopting, you know, a few of them, none of them, all of them. And you have to figure out how they fit into what you've already got. Cause something, everything can't fit into the same already packed hose. At some point, it it all has to be uh streamlined and that's the work this vertical team is doing. And it's, and believe me, and I tell you, it's yeoman's work, but it is so critical, so critical.
Can, can I just ask, do these model units come with recommendations for the the content-rich nonfiction?
And that's one of the things, when when this group finishes making their recommendation on what their trajectory is. When Joan and I were chatting the other day and I was talking with Julie, we're building the budget. So one of the things that we really need to be thinking about as we're building our map is, okay, so what, what now resources do we not have? That we need to make sure we have if we're going to ask teachers to teach these units. So what I'm gonna be proposing when we talk about the budget is that we identify a a fairly good chunk of money. Like we did when we did the technology, we did the leases in choice. I don't think we can put thirty thousand dollars or thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget. But I think we could look at, since our leases in in choice is is going away. Maybe what we wanna do is take that chunk of money and say for the next two years, while we're aligning our curriculum. We need to know that there's actually a source of money. It can't come out of the building budgets, it just can't. And if we take that kind of money and we put it right away in the budget, well, this is a strategy we're gonna need to talk about, obviously. If we're trying to keep our budget increase into a certain range and put the priority on salaries. You know, essential um non-salary items and then special education, which we know, you know, really has a lot of of a driver. These curriculum units or the, whatever we're doing curriculum is critically important. We have to have a designated funding source for it. It can't be the last thing we think of. So I think that's, when we talk about budget priorities, I think that's a driver in whatever source we choose to use. Um, because it's, it's just critical. We we just can't, you know, say we don't have the money for it. We have to get the money for it. Or else all this work that they're doing is for naught.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that would be a real shame. So Julie, what's next here, so we?
So um what I wanted to show you really quickly was just some of the titles so you could get a sense of, you know, across, across the content. Um, what's happening with these model units. These are English Language Arts Model Units. So um, we're talking about habitats and geography, uh, we're talking about poetry and extreme weather, fables. Images and metaphors, financial literacy, which is pretty fascinating, um, grade five. Um, the ninth grade one, I don't know if you can see it, but it's art in history. Uh, I'm sorry, it's art, art, poetry, excuse me. So um, that's definitely an interesting combination and so it's really looking at how can we work across discipline and.
And poetry's always been one of our challenges for whatever reason, so this is maybe another way in.
Yep.
You know, another way in.
Our, our third grade team actually um has started using one of the units, the Fables unit. And they love it and it wasn't like this.
The teachers or the kids?
The teachers, oh, yeah. And the kids, yeah, um, but they, it really jives with what they've, what they know and love about teaching already. Um, because they're using the same um strategies to teach, but now they have all the resources. And um another um unit that's not listed here, but there's a Cynthia Ryland, who's a wonderful author, unit for third grade. And I know our teachers kind of struggle sometimes with, okay, we we wanna make sure that kids are reading at the level that they need to read at. But we also want them to be exposed to rich literature and the grade level expectation. So it kinda has both. It has a, a um whole group um book that they read. But then there are, Cynthia Ryland has written so many wonderful books from like beginning of second grade to fourth grade. So that everyone in the class can hold in their hands a book that they can read at their level by the same author. And um so then not only are they getting exposed to what they should be getting exposed to, but then they're reading at their level. Teachers can do what they always do and have small groups. And then also it's so community building, cause it's like, we're all reading this wonderful author, Cynthia Ryland. And it's, you know, it's not you're in that group, you're in that group, you know, we're all one community. I don't know, I just, I, I really like the um unit, so we were very pleasantly surprised by the unit so far.
So, um, what we'll be working on this year is pretty much everything I just described. Uh, next too, um, and coordinating our writing program, K to twelve, looking at grade level texts and identifying, you know. A few texts per grade level that that will feel, um, that we feel is definitely something that that we wanna incorporate at each grade level. Um, and interdisciplinary reading and writing, looking at Park, et cetera, et cetera. We have many, many things to do, not enough time to do it in.
What can we do with our time when we have everything aligned?
No, I don't know. I've never, I've never worked at a time where I've had everything aligned.
No, I don't think there ever will be a time that everything is aligned.
Do you have, are there any questions that you have?
I have one quick question. It's a little off, it's all English, but um. What are the benefits of of reading in class aloud? The teacher to the students, some students read, you know, you're reading a book and, okay, Ms. Smith says, okay. Julie, now you read, and then they read maybe like a a paragraph.
Like a piece of it.
We don't, we don't do that very often.
Some people do do that.
High schools, middle high, middle and high school, and I just wanna know what the benefits are.
Sometimes I've done that. You have to expose students to tone, to mood, you know, kind of discuss. Well, just, you know, as you're reading with students, uh, many times you'll be describing, so, you know, here's where we are in the story. This is what it means and and kind of building in a layer of of knowledge about what it is that you're working on. It it it's different if they read every time, you know, you read this line, I read that line, you read, you know, that's, that's a different kind of reading. But a lot of teachers model um appropriate reading strategies.
No, no, but you were asking if the student reads. Is that what you mean?
You mean with the teacher or or just kind of round robin?
I've, I've heard it done, you know, whereas the teacher will read the book to the students. You know, they're all reading one book or, you know, um, in lower grades, the middle school level. It would be that the students would take turns. And the only thi- the only thing that I'm finding with that is I wonder if the kids, some students are better readers than others. And I'm thinking that that could pose a problem with the way that that child, um, the one that's listening to the other student. How they're comprehending the book.
I think, I think it depends on the situation, I do, and I think that um many teachers use that strategy to help build internal knowledge. You know, of what's happening, but sometimes people will use it to get a sense of, you know, eh, as you're reading, are you able to comprehend? And so some teachers will read a book um to their students, an entire chapter book. Um, you know, just to read a a text at grade level or to read something that they can expose all students to. So it really probably depends on the situation and the text and and the methodology that teacher is using.
I can speak to it at elementary. I'm not sure what they do at middle school, but um second through fifth. Gone are the days that you are all in a classroom, all reading a book and you take a turn, you take a turn, you take a turn. That's called round robin reading and that is not effective. And so, yes, you, the teacher does hear their students read out loud when they are in a small group. And when they're reading a book at their level. Um, or it doesn't necessarily have to be at their level. It could be a book that is a higher level, but they're getting support and they're in a small group. Now, there's also what we call interactive read aloud, where the teacher is definitely doing what Julie said. They're reading a book out loud to their students and sometimes they're able to follow the text. Either they have it in their hands or sometimes it's on a smartboard or so they can see the text. So they are hearing good fluent reading, which is what they need to hear. But also the teacher is interacting with the text and modeling. Okay, right now I'm stopping and I think, wait a minute, what did that mean? I need to go back and read it again. So that's called interactive read aloud and we do that at Pembroke and.
I would say in every grade level.
And then, but but you know what I mean? It's, it's, it's not, I remember, you know, there were days when everybody had a book and you went.
Right.
Yeah, I remember even my high school days.
Waiting for your turn and hoping you don't mess up.
Sometimes a passage is worth reading aloud, um, to talk about it, to to think about it more on a deeper level. Um, sometimes students um benefit from hearing a teacher read aloud. Uh, because of the way, the inflection of the voice and it makes more sense to them too, so. And then maybe I would have a kid try it too, you know, and see how how they read it, so.
Probably wouldn't be the norm. It would, you know, teachers are always picking routines that they think are appropriate for that particular. Whatever the skill is they're teaching, so we wouldn't say that that would be the only kind of reading. We would want to see.
For some students, that's more engaging.
Yep, you know, that's why you have to match it.
Definitely.
Thank you, thank you, balancing, they're all different. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
You know, we could talk about this all night.
That's great though.
That's great.
I mean, we wanna get a job with you guys.
We have a lot of fun, I will say that, we do.
You know, you used that word fun so many times, I'm like, wow, I think we love it. I mean, honestly.
It's busy anyway, but it's busier because of all these other things and these people take this time and, and they, and they do it beyond their school day. And they, they do work, you know, to get ready for these meetings and they're not paid for. So I, I think that that's, you know, that's, I mean, not that you do everything for money, but, but they don't get paid for this. And they're, and they're taking yet another thing on for, you know, at the time when there's already a very busy lifestyle in, in teaching.
I've said it before, it just, it just makes me feel so good to have a child in this school district.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was thinking, does the state ever like designate model school districts and other schools can come and learn from how you do things here? Because I, I do think that there's something that other.
A lot of times with the level one schools, they, I think they, they tend to do that.
Other schools could learn a lot.
Boston Globe does.
Yeah.
And did.
Well, we've definitely gotten some calls and when we meet as curriculum directors, um, we talk a lot about the, the work that we do and, um, share ideas and, and things like that, so.
It's really.
Well, thank you very much for making the time for coming.
Sorry, it's so late. No.
I'm gonna step forward to keep you up this late.
Yes, good luck.
I'm gonna tell you what my drive is.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
Does anyone, we're gonna move on to the superintendent's information. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Did you wanna go over?
I just wanted to point out that there is a school choice report in here, um, that, you know, Laura puts together every year. And I just think the committee always finds this, I think, interesting. Uh, it breaks, you know, down the choice out by grade level. Um, and it's, it's just kinda fun to see how it changes and then what actual districts, eh, uh, you know, either send students to us or we, or we send students to them. On the back, it's private and parochial. That's always interesting. And then, um, vocational schools and homeschool children. Yeah, so, you know, we don't have to discuss this tonight, but if you wanna take a look at it and if you have any questions, we can certainly discuss it at another point. But I think it's always a very useful, um, document. Um, you know, we have, uh, twenty-eight students that choice out and thirty students that choice in. And that's really as a result of what we determine has, is our capacity to take more students in. There are always more students every year who want to come than we are able to, um, allow. And then the other two things, I just wanted to make sure that you have a chance to, uh, to look at, um, are the, uh, two Pembroke reports. Um, one is the wipe samples report and just to remind you, that was not part of the soil, uh, reports that were part of the, um, you know, the, uh, immediate hazard plan. These, these were specifically done at my request, um, to answer the question, you know, are students and staff safe inside of the school? Given the conditions of the soil outside. So, uh, this report here, Will Cox and Barton put together this, um, wipe sample report. And I just wanna make sure you know that it's, it's here. Um, and then the second, um, one is a more detailed report that is the revised imminent hazard evaluation. This is the one, um, that went to, uh, DEP with the second round of test, testing, which was the shallow and deep soil testing in the construction site. I think there were, I think there were s- over sixty, um, tests done in that second, in that second, uh, round. And, um, the deep soil testing in the fields. Um, last Friday, the DEP and the consulting company came to the conclusion that it is naturally occurring. So, um, it, DEP will, will be removing themselves from the regulatory process. Because initially they involved themselves because they are trying to see whether or not it is a, basically a hazardous waste dump. So after all the testing that was done and analyzed, it was determined that it's not as a result of that, that it's naturally occurring. So the, the, um, uh, architects and the, um, builder have been, uh, working on, um, designing a, a process and a program for in the new construction site. Where, where they're actually, uh, where there's new dirt that's brought in, you know, to cap it. What those depths need to be in order to, um, address the issue, um, in a way that makes sense. So for example, in some places, there's three feet of good soil. So, you know, you have your contaminated soil. They'll put some kind of a marker, landscape paper or s- I, I don't know, mesh or something. I'm not quite sure how they do it, but.
Some type of fabric.
Some kind of fabric. So that in the future, if anybody ever dug down or there was erosion and all of a sudden you started seeing this fabric, you'd be like, okay, that getting close to the contaminated soil. So in some cases it's three feet, in some cases it's eighteen inches, in some cases it's two feet. Um, if it were continued to be regulatory through DEP, it would have just been three feet everywhere. But because of the fact that it's naturally occurring, there's some greater flexibility. So the construction site, right now, they're removing dirt, um, to the lower field, which you all discussed at the, um, meeting, the joint meeting. They're doing that now and the goal is they're gonna pour the foundation and start erecting the steel. They're gonna cover that entire site with six inches of good, of good dirt. So anyone working on the actual construction site is not in, uh, contaminated soil. Um, so they're making it a safe, a safe site, basically. It hasn't yet been determined like what's gonna happen with the playground and what's gonna happen, um, you know, with the other fields in terms of capping them. But the goal of housing that dirt down in that lower field is that that dirt, well, some of that dirt will be used to raise the grade of that lower field. So there'll be one continuous field, but the other will be to, to deal with the, um, the soil underneath the new two, the two new fields that will be put together. So I, I don't know when the capping process on those other fields will actually be done. I don't think we have that information. But I believe that the design, the architects are developing, they've been charged, I think, at the last building committee, to develop a design for that. So how that would work. So that's forthcoming. But I just wanted you to have the full, you know, report in case you're so interested in reading all the details.
At the joint meeting, it was discussed that the bottom field where it's being housed.
Yes.
Will, the back field and the front field will all be.
New.
Will all be new.
They will all be new. If you recall the, um.
Well, grass, not new field.
No, no, well, they'll be, they'll be.
Well, they said it would be red, it would be grass.
No, I, no, I, I think there, I think there's discussion about at the end of the project, the end of the project, all of the fields will be, will be revamped. So they won't just be grass. The, those fields that now are, are, were not part of the original project.
Right.
Because they're, they're incidental to this, the soil stuff impacted them. My understanding is they're gonna replace those with actual fields. That they're gonna be, that they're gonna be designing that.
Was that the joint meeting that was not?
Well, I think that might be, I think, I might be wrong, but I'll, I'll clarify that for you. But that's what I believe. That at the end, um, that's part of what the architects were charged to draw. So the contractor, the contractor gave the figure of one point seven million dollars is the, the change order. For, um, the, the dealing with the mitigating the soil and going forward. That does not include the cost of designing what's gonna be done to those other fields or the mitigation of those fields. Um, but the four million dollar, they were looking at how are they faring at this point? Because nobody would ever wanna go back to the town and ask them for any more money. So, you know, w- looking at what needs to be done, you know, what was the impact of this soil situation? It appears to be about one point seven million dollars. But one point five million dollars is being saved by housing the dirt on site and not paying a disposal fee to go offsite.
Yeah, well, at that joint meeting, there was no.
Well, but you know what I mean? Yeah, I, I mean, in other words, if, if that had to be removed from the site and you add that to the one point seven, even if it was one million dollars. You know, you're getting dangerously close to that, you know, that cap that everybody was hoping would be wiggle room, you know? So it, hey, it's a situation nobody planned on. I mean, we're, we're dealing with it, you know, as best we can. And, uh, more information comes out daily.
Is there any way that we can have the minutes from the building, um, the school building committee meetings included in our packet?
Sure. It's a great idea.
I mean, I know they're probably online.
They are online, but I can, I can ask, um, yeah, I can ask Chuck to, um, set, you know, send them to, maybe just have Laura on the list and then we can just print them.
Yeah, or even electronically. I don't know if he sends it electronically to the.
I'll have him send it to Laura electronic. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Financial report, budget priorities, we already did?
Well, it, it, it went, it went, yeah, it went on the, um, agenda, cause you started your conversation the last time. People wanted to have a real chance to think about it on their own. And Joan and I are, um, getting ready to start the process. I did speak to Sandy Garrity, uh, regarding the process and, and she would like us to follow the process we used last year. She'd like us to give her numbers, um, as early as we have them. Um, and I told her the committee probably would be really getting into the numbers in January at some point. That December really wasn't realistic if that was what, when Mike was talking about wanting everything.
By Monday.
Yeah, well, that's not happening.
Monday to sixteen?
So, yeah.
Monday the twenty-third, he said, remember? The Christmas week.
Yes, yes, and we, you know, that, that isn't happening. But, you know, you'll be talking about it in January and I think that Sandy's, before she didn't get, used to get it till that, till March. So she's, you know, I mean, I think she's happy, you know, the other thing is, um, she, they're doing, they're doing that Saturday. Everybody comes on Saturday and presents their budget like they did last year, but the schools are not included in that. We'll do what we did last year. Which is to have a separate meeting with them, um, you know, when they schedule it. So we are not, you know, on that list of the Saturdays. But otherwise, she, she's looking for the same thing we gave her last year. Salaries, not, oh, sorry, salaries, non-salaries, um. Salaries, non-salaries and special education. That's what she's looking for.
Good.
So, so I think we're good, but so, do you have input into?
And we talked about the budget priorities last time.
Right?
Have you thought about it? He doesn't see it on TV, so he doesn't know.
He doesn't know I'm on TV. I'll sit on it and nobody, nobody will hear it. Get you.
Anybody?
I didn't have anything additional, but I supported the list, although I didn't put it with me, the shortlist that we had.
Yeah, well, if, if I remember, we wanted to keep everything we had.
Yeah, right.
Right? Um, the technology staff was what we talked about.
And this is something we discussed in the budget and finance meeting. We came up with three, um, budget priorities. We had director of technology position. We had the measures of academic progress system, the maps. Um, cause that's a computer-based district assessment, right? To measure growth, project student proficiency on assessments, informs educators on how to differentiate instructions, evaluate programs, structure curriculum and establish longitudinal, longitudinal, yeah, thanks, sorry. Data continuity for each student and the whole district K through twelve. So that's obviously very important. And that will facilitate, um, response to intervent, to intervention, among other things. And then you noticed that there, you noted that there, um, you would like new funds for new curriculum needs in the next two budgets.
The other thing we do have to do is we have to put in a point five ELL teacher. Because we have four ELLs, eh, English as a second language students. And, um, we've been trying, we've been having to hire an outside consultant. But it really would be better for us, be, for, to have our own in, in-house person. So that would be someone who, when students are identified and require ELL services. They would provide tutorials and they would consult with the classroom teachers to make sure that, uh, materials were appropriate. So I, I would say that we need to look at, um, a halftime ELL teacher.
Other thoughts from, from you, from your perspective? Okay.
Great. All right, we'll work on that.
Any subcommittee reports? Um, budget and finance? Well, that's kind of what we were just talking about.
That's it?
Um, yes, we had a, uh, meeting on December fourth and we discussed the budget timeline. And the budget priorities. Governance?
We were scheduled to have a meeting this evening that was disrupted, so that meeting will take place in January. And, uh, we will inform you of what happens at that meeting.
Okay, proceeding through section I.
Okay, negotiating, uh, we did meet, I mean, we met last week. Uh, getting ready for the custodians and the, um, cafeteria workers. So things are going good.
We have our proposals that we're ready to, and we just need to get some schedule, meeting schedules.
Um, public relations. Uh, we did meet on November fifteenth and we discussed, um, Facebook. Um, and we're going to be, we're still working on a, kind of a draft, month by month outline of possible district Facebook posts and topics. And thinking about how that, we would apply that. Um, we talked about the blog update and, but you really.
Barry did, Barry did that. He, he, one of the things with the blog is, um, we set up, and Alana was helpful in setting up a, kind of a framework for this. But, um, so when I post on the blog, people have an opportunity either to look on the page or they can subscribe to get the blogs. And if they get the, if they subscribe to get the blogs, then when there's a new post, it just goes right to them. They could get an email that there's a new blog. So Barry's been working on that and, uh, cause I'd been busy blogging about the sites, right? But he, he integrated it into the blog, so people can get it in multiple places.
Now, your blog now, right now?
Mm-hmm. My understanding from his conversation with me the other day was, he said, I've got all your blogs on your blog page and that people can subscribe. And then, um, he said, I've actually all got all your past blogs on your blog page too.
Oh, that's great.
So he's.
Can people respond to your blogs?
They, they can, they don't, it's not a ongoing blog where they, where they write it and then people keep it. But you can, if you wanna respond to me, you can, you just, you respond and it goes to my email.
Okay, so it doesn't see like, like some blogs will have.
He hasn't got it set up that way. But it, if people have something they wanna comment on or so, you know, they just goes right to my email.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, I certainly would want people's opinions.
Yeah, and, and sometimes the form, if you do allow the.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the comments to comment, sometimes doesn't work out that way.
Yeah, so.
We also discussed.
Good.
We discussed the quarterly newsletter, ideas for that and the Georgetown Community Television potential budget program.
Well, we didn't get to the discussion of that in budget and finance, but that, I really wanted budget and finance to have some input into like, well, would we want the budget and finance subcommittee people to be part of the television show? What, you know, what would we, you know, what, what would we like to do about that? So we still have to have that next conversation about that.
What does Beverly Inos?
Beverly Inos is fine. You know, she, I mean, she knows we're doing, you know, her show is very different than ours. I mean, her show is, you know, ten fifteen minute snippets, community interest, you know, information for the community. Ours is, give me information for the community, but it's usually, it's more on a school-based topic. You know, that, that maybe is a little more in-depth than I would ever be able to discuss on Beverly's show. So we, we still wanna participate in her show.
Would this show be?
These are like twenty, thirty minutes.
Okay. I mean, if you think that it would be a good idea for the.
I think we should meet, but in our next meeting, we'll have a discussion about it.
Okay, sounds good.
You might become movie stars.
Okay, safety Pam, you had a meeting today?
Uh, yes, we did have a safety meeting, uh, this morning. And, um, we, Chief Donald Cudmore discussed a lot about NEMLEC, which we are now a, a member community, along with thirty-six others in this region. And the training will begin. He's, he's assigned Officer Adam Raymond to be our NEMLEC liaison. And the training will begin, he's, he's assigned Officer Adam Raymond to be our NEMLEC liaison.
In Georgetown, about four years, I think he said, but eight years in addition to, in another
And there was competition?
Mm-hmm, yeah, four people.
Well, they were interested, and, and, yep, he was selected. So And he, he also just mentioned that, that Alice, the legislative trend is, is moving in the direction of mandating Alice training, which is, it helps schools and organizations prepare for violent intruder situations.
When we made national news, do you remember what this, that's what Alice was
Right, but he said, the way it's going, we would be able to select which parts of it would be appropriate for our district, when, when the time comes. That's just
Like anything else, it's timing.
Yeah.
You know, no one was ready for, nobody was ready for Alice training. And then, you know, now there's been more shootings, you know, more, you know, more susceptible, you know, people susceptible in schools. The idea of sitting in the room and sitting quietly in the corner may be appropriate in some situations. But, you know, the, the thought of, you know, if someone says there's an, there's a shooter in the cafeteria at the high school, well, then there's discussion about whether or not, if you're over in the middle school, whether it makes sense for you to take your students and get out of there. So there's, there's a, there's, it's not without controversy, but it's less controversial now than it was when we made national news. So, you know, we, we wouldn't do anything without thinking it through very carefully and determining how it really made sense for us and, and our students. But I don't think any of us ever wanna communicate to our staff and students that if there's somebody that comes in, and, and you are in, in physical danger, that we want you to sit there and do nothing. That's not, that's not the plan. So it, it's how do you, how do you convey that message? Who is it appropriate to convey it to? What level of training do you do, if any training? You know what I mean, there's just a lot, so we're, we're talking about that at the safety committee. That's usually where we vet these kind of ideas. And, you know, we wouldn't do it without coming to the committee anyway, but Pam's right. You know, Donnie said that that's something that has become, you know, more on the minds of the legislators. And rather than districts having choices, it may actually come down as a mandate.
He just wanted to prepare us for that.
Just wanted to let us know.
That had happened six years ago.
Mm-hmm, yes, it was, yeah, it was, yeah.
And so Heidi, Attorney General Blochett has come out with a new anti-bullying program. And so Heidi Manjo came up with a slideshow based on his program, and she presented it to the middle school.
Oh, yeah.
And Guy Prescott has his own, which he will be presenting to the high school on December nineteenth, high school students. And in the transportation report, the Georgetown, the principals and the bus drivers and NRT personnel all got together and just discussed discipline procedures, and how they could each support and, and help each other when better their, their communication. And that was, was there anything else?
No, I think that's
Do you remember significance?
And CPAC, have they met?
No, there was a, a coffee on December fourth that I was not able to attend, so
Okay. School building?
I think Carol pretty well summed up the Pembroke project. The only thing I'll add to that is the next meeting for that is January fourteenth. The middle-high school project, MSBA is asking for some more testing, which costs more money. So the architect is going to go to a meeting with the MSBA, with the engineer, to talk about that, and see if they can work something out, 'cause people don't wanna go back to the town for no money.
Yeah, that's next Tuesday, I'm going to that as well.
And then the turf field meeting is this coming Monday, and
Great.
Okay. Moving on to the approval of the collaborative.
Right. So Pam, do you wanna introduce what we're doing here?
Sure, yeah, so I am the representative to CREST, which is the Collaborative for Regional Educational Services and Training. And CREST is, it's a 501(c)(3) public entity, under the jurisdiction of its fifteen-member school committees, of which we are one. Mostly the superintendents of school comprise the governing, the board, the board of directors. There are a few school committee members, including myself. And in order, they are, a- as Carol noted in the orange notes, there was, they've been reorganizing themselves a little bit. And part of the reorganization is that they're renaming themselves to a more appropriate name, given the, the services that they provide. And so we need to just reauthorize this letter of agreement. CREST, basically, it provides educational, vocational, and therapeutic programs for students of all disabilities in the least restrictive service-rich environment. It's comprised of eight different schools for students ages three to twenty-two. It offers in-service training and other professional development activities to teachers and administrators. So the collaborative services, they, they try to maximize efficiency, quality, and equity of educational opportunities. So their services are basically available to all of their member districts.
So is there, are there schools, like, I don't know, like, I, like, is it a separate institution? Then, okay, so
It's a self, it's a, it's when we talk about resident, we talk about outside placement, they're an example of an outside placement.
But the name, like, on the building would be CREST?
Right.
That's what it would, that's what it would say.
Authorized by the department, by the DSE.
Right. And the DSE is, is, you know, requiring that, as part of their new legislation, that all of the towns that participate, you know, on the board and are part of the membership, get their school committees to take, take a vote, basically, you know, approving the conditions of this Articles of Agreement.
And how long have we been
Well, they were, they were part of, we were part of LET before I came, so I'm guessing, you know, ten or more years, anyway. And as I said, they, they really struggled, they had some, some significant issues. And, you know, they, they've done some amazing work there, using some very skilled interims. And now they've got a terrific executive director, a lot of energy, very positive, knows special ed very, very well. You know, very dynamic, and, you know, the very active board. They used to have problems getting people to the board meetings, it's an active board. And I think, you know, they've worked really, really hard to really improve the quality of their programs, and they've done a, they've done a yeoman's job. So I really urge you, I'm not, I'm not sure, 'cause there, Pam said there are multiple programs, it was like a high school alternative program.
I tried to, to find that, their budget is about similar to ours, their total budget.
Yes.
I don't know if that gives you any kind of sense, but their, their director of programs is excellent, is full of energy.
Yeah, very enthusiastic about it. Definitely restructured, they didn't, they really were restructured in very strange ways. So now they've got, you know, people in the right places, and, and good people doing good work. So, you know, unless you, you know, have very specific questions, I would urge you to support this
Do we have to make a motion?
Yes, yes, I would say that you should, you should
To just to change the, to
Put the motion here, but it would be to, I think it would be to approve the Articles of Agreement as, for the Collaborative for Regional Educational Services and Training as presented. That would be fine.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Articles of Agreement for the Collaborative for Regional Educational Services and Training
As presented.
As presented. So moved. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. And if you do have any questions, there's a lot of information on the website, you know, you can really learn.
No dates on, well, you know, I
Because there's so many different committees, I think.
Right, and I think that they don't know when people are, you know, are gonna
But I mean, should I think they have excellent services.
Okay, we can certainly ask about it.
Do, do, how often do you go to meetings?
Once a month.
Once a month, yeah.
They're very interesting meetings, I know they are.
Okay, we have an anonymous donation, a very generous family donated money. Can I say what the money is for?
Yeah, no, you can say what the money's for, but it's anonymous donation.
Okay, towards the sixth-grade Camp Key of trip for a student to attend, so we appreciate that.
Very much.
Very generous, very nice.
Very nice. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the two hundred and eighty-five dollar anonymous donation for a student to attend Camp Key of as presented. So moved. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Another Pearly donation, Naomi Wall, oh, she, that was the five hundred dollar grant, yes. But, so she had to apply for the grant
That's correct.
In order to get it, which I think is great, because she to research the available grants. So the chair will entertain a motion to accept the five hundred dollar grant from the Winter Wyman Company with gratitude as presented. So moved. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The three additional clubs.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, so there's a, a budget for clubs and activities, that's in the middle-high school budget every year. And one of the things we're always trying to do is to make sure we offer clubs that the students are interested in, and that they're well-attended. So occasionally, we, we have people who come forward with suggestions. And the way we've sort of worked it out with them is that the first year that someone comes with a club, and we agree to do it, we pay them, the advisor, a six hundred dollar stipend, just a flat stipend. And then, over the course of the first year, if it ends up being a club that's gonna continue, then we negotiate it with the union into the list in the contract of the club, so that we try to determine, well, what's, what's really the right stipend for it. So Peter brought forward, and I think Mary Beth had spoken about the enemy, M and M
Anime.
Anime, anime, club, which she was very excited to have at the school. And then the Art National Honor Society, we have Music Honor Society and National Honor Society. So this is an Art National Honor Society. And then one thing that is very exciting is, middle school students want to run an anti-bullying club, and they wanna call it an anti-bullying club.
Wow.
So I, I think that's great, because that is really coming from the students, student-driven. So I, I urge you to approve those three pilot, you know, clubs, so we can get those in place for the students.
The anime, anime?
It's a
Japanese animation.
Japanese animation.
I was shopping at Barnes and Noble recently, and they have a whole section on anime.
Yes, it's actually become very popular.
So popular. And kids love to draw.
And it hits a, you know, it, we're all about all kids, and it hits a section or a group of kids that maybe aren't the type to join some of our other clubs. So this, this is great, we feel like it's very much needed, and I'm excited about it.
So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the Georgetown Middle High School new pilot clubs with a six hundred dollar stipend each as presented. So moved. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and at this time, we do have to enter into executive session, Chapter thirty, A twenty-one, paragraph two and three, for purpose of non-union and union negotiations, and we will not return to open session at nine forty-nine. It's a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, great, good night. Happy holidays.